Okay, I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, March 12th. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call.
Barazza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peiper.
Here.
Chanset.
Here.
Here.
Chanset's here.
Okay.
Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Euer.
Here.
Saron.
Here.
Vogelsinger.
Here.
That's 13.
Reminder for the public and everybody up, sitting up here that make sure that you speak directly into the microphone for the recording and the broadcast. You'll hear this in the background. If you can hear yourself and the mic lights up, you know that you're being broadcast. And if you come up to speak at the microphone tonight, don't hesitate to adjust it to your own height. And then also, we just need your name for the record. Item three for this evening's agenda is approval of the minutes for February 3rd, 2024, February 27th, 2024, and special meeting, March 4th, 2024. Motion?
So moved.
By Soffa, and second was by Euer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any items to add, remove, or change tonight for tonight's agenda?
No, there aren't.
Alan. Can we move item C in the consent agenda to regular agenda because it involves a budget amendment? And I just want to be more transparent on that, just so it's talked about.
Okay. I was going to make a comment during the, that because it's, you know, jumping from one year to another year to another year and additional costs that we've had on everything. Do you want to just talk about that during consent agenda, or do you want to do that as a separate item?
Yeah, I guess we can just talk about it in consent, so everybody's aware.
Okay. Yeah, I wanted to make sure that it got explained, explained to the public because of all the issues we've had trying to procure vehicles in the last probably five years.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Then we will move on to item five, the consent agenda. Alderman Chanset?
Yes, indeed. The consent agenda reads as follows. Twenty-four dash thirty-three dash R, authorizing execution of Task Order 37, that's with Engineering Enterprises for Design Engineering Services, water main replacement along Bernadette Lane and South Batavia Avenue. Resolution twenty-four dash eighteen dash R, renewal of the Illinois Water Waste Water Agency Response Network Mutual Aid Agreement. Resolution twenty-four dash thirty-eight dash R, authorizing approval to purchase two plow Resolution twenty-four dash thirty-six dash R, authorizing approval of a budget amendment. Resolution twenty-four dash thirty-nine dash R, authorizing an agreement with TKB Associates for document scanning and indexing. Resolution twenty-four dash forty dash R, authorizing notice of intent for Kane County's Climate Pollution Reduction Grant Program application. Resolution twenty-four dash forty-seven dash R, approval of fiscal agency agreement related to IMBCA restitution payments. Resolution twenty-four dash forty-eight dash R, authorizing execution of Task Order 23, that's with Trotter and Associates, for the Phase 2B Facility Plan and Bottom Line. Resolution twenty-four dash forty-one dash R, approval of the 2024 zoning map. Resolution twenty-four dash thirty-five dash R, authorizing execution of a renewable contract with Trees R.A. Inc. for Brush Collection Services. Resolution twenty-four dash forty-four dash R, authorizing the execution of Task Order Number Four with Liz Janney, I'll serve Associates for the Jeffrey D. Shelkey Government Center Roof Replacement and Fall Protection Six Systems. Resolution twenty-four dash forty-two dash R, that's a 2024 Code Compliance Lawn Mowing Maintenance Contract. I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
So moved.
Motion by Chanset, second by Lehman. Okay. Now entertain questions on the items that we had discussed earlier for the dump trucks and budget amendment.
Yeah, I just wanted to point that out just because it involves a budget amendment. And I know it's, my understanding is we're pulling money forward that we would probably budget it for next year for these. And...
If I push it forwards, it's right in front of you.
I'll actually say to have it closer to you. If it's pointing up, then it's getting, then all the other microphones are getting the feed, so you may want to pull yours down.
That's the microphones.
Yeah, I recovered the microphones. So it's extra money we're spending this year that we weren't planning on spending. So I just wanted to be transparent about that, so everybody knew that we were changing the budget with that.
I am sure that there's additional cost because the chassis are available and we can actually get one. I know that over the past several cycles, especially the bigger trucks that we've tried to order, have been very difficult to find, build, and get within what we thought was the normal time.
Yep.
Does anybody else have any other questions on that? Okay. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
And then we'll vote on the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, then next will be item number six, which is matters from the public for items that are not on our agenda tonight. If you want to come up and take one at a time, come up to the microphone, just give us your name, and then we'll give you a few minutes here apiece.
My name is Martin Byrne. My pronouns are they/them, and I'm a proud Batavia resident. Last night, Villa Park became the latest nearby municipality to pass a resolution calling for a ceasefire, an end to the horrific bombardment of the Palestinian people by Israel in Gaza, a ceasefire that benefits everyone in the region, including those currently being held hostage by Hamas. Other communities such as Plainfield and Glendale Heights, among many others, are considering similar resolutions. Batavia must join the progress. Tonight, we are requesting the following proclamation be discussed and voted on at either the next committee of the whole or council meeting. And I'd like to read the short resolution now. City of Batavia, resolution calling for a permanent and immediate ceasefire and hostage release in Gaza, whereas over 31,000 Palestinians have been killed by the Israeli military action in Gaza since the October 7th attack carried out by Hamas, which resulted in the deaths of 1,200 people. And whereas we mourn all civilian lives lost on, since, and before October 7th. And whereas we condemn all forms of racism, colonization, antisemitism, ethnic cleansing, genocide, Islamophobia, and collective punishment that may occur or have occurred in our city, across the nation, and around the world. And whereas the Chicagoland area is home to at least 23,000 Palestinians, making the region home to the largest number of Palestinians than anywhere else in the United States. And whereas the International Court of Justice found on January 26th, allegations of genocide against Israel's military operations in Gaza are, quote, "plausible." And whereas United Nations Secretary General Antonio Guterres referred to Gaza as a, quote, "graveyard for children" on November 6th, 2023. And whereas humanity has an obligation to prevent genocide. And whereas the lives of approximately 120 Israeli hostages in Gaza are being imperiled by the ongoing hostilities and the most successful moments of hostages' return have been facilitated by ceasefire. And whereas hundreds of thousands of lives will continue to be at risk if a ceasefire is not achieved and humanitarian aid is not delivered without delay. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Batavia. The City of Batavia supports the proposed U.S. Congress Resolution HR 786, urging an immediate ceasefire to urgently end the violence, a release of all hostages and prisoners, and promptly send and facilitate the entry of humanitarian assistance into Gaza and other affected areas of the armed conflict. Be it further resolved that the City of Batavia stands in solidarity with all civilians facing displacement, death, injuries, suffering, grief, loss, dehydration, starvation, and despair as a result of the ongoing bombardment of Gaza by the Israeli military. As proudly displayed on the bridge downtown, the City of Batavia is committed to peace on earth, which includes signing on to a resolution condemning war crimes and genocide, as well as urging our leaders to call for a permanent ceasefire. And there's a little blurb at the bottom as well about sending the resolution to our representatives in Congress, as well as neighboring municipalities. And I just want to say one more quick thing. This is as much a local issue as it is a national and a global one. As the resolution states, the Chicagoland area is home to more Palestinians than anywhere else in the United States. As Palestinian Americans watch their governments slaughter their own people, we must show them solidarity. We must show solidarity to those in our community who have been victims of the antisemitism and Islamophobia that has been on the rise as a result of the bombardment of Palestine. And of course, it would be a deep irony if Batavia did not show our support for an end to this horrific violence. As a community we are proud of, and in fact, famous for, the beautiful Peace on Earth sign that stretches across the pedestrian bridge downtown. This sign, as you of course know, was recently lighted and made permanent. You had a discussion at the last COW meeting about building a selfie station in front of the sign. Peace on earth are not empty words. They carry meaning. And it is time for our community to show we mean it. If we cannot say ceasefire, we have no business saying peace on earth. I thank you for your time, and I also know that I believe there are some other people who would like to address this matter with you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And for you to know, we will put this on the next COW agenda for discussion and make a decision, I believe, at that time for that request.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for listening to me. My name is Faisz Kozendar. I am citizen of the United States since 1973. I voted for Carter. He was one-term president because of the Iran hostage crisis. This time, three years ago, actually, I voted for Biden, and he will be one-term president because of the Gaza War. He flew all the way to Tel Aviv to declare war on my family. I have over 100 person in Rafah. Rafah is a small town like Batavia. It has only 300,000. Now it's crowded with million and a half, without shelter and without food. My nephew there sent me a text telling me that my home where I was raised till high school, then I fled coming to the States for education. I got my degree and I got to my work, et cetera, but there, they don't have even bread to eat. Starvation, you know, started. Now they counting. They stopped counting people from bombs and wreckage. They are now, they're counting the starvation. Three children just passed because they don't have enough food. Now these children will ask you the day after, why you didn't do, why you didn't stop it? In this century, this century, the 21st century, people die from starvation because they used food as a weapon against two and a half million people. Two and a half million people going to die, not from bomb. We had enough from bomb. Over 100,000 dead and injured. But now they going to die from starvation and disease in this century. And we are watching it on the screen in our living room. People die every day. So it's in your shoulder. You have to have this resolution. Ceasefire today before it's too late. Thank you very much for your listening.
Good evening, residents of Batavia. My name is Hamza Ahmed. I am a student at the College of DuPage. I come here today with hopes and aspirations that this city can serve as a beacon of inspiration to the neighboring cities around it. I come with an opportunity for us, the people of Batavia, to not only be a role model to those with us today, but also to leave a legacy of inspiration to the generations to come. This is an opportunity, my friends, for us to stand on the right side of history. There is a great injustice taking place in Palestine as I speak. The equivalent of two nuclear bombs has been dropped on the city of Gaza. More than 30,000 have been killed, amongst them 13,000 children and 9,000 women. Under the cloak of the lie that terrorists are being targeted, Israel has been indiscriminately killing innocent people, actively attempting an ethnic cleansing while openly referring to the people of Gaza as animals. This is not a war between Muslims and Jews. Matter of fact, this is not even a war. This is nothing less than a genocide. The picture I have with me today is of a boy named Yazan Al-Kafarna. Yazan had cerebral palsy. He also could not consume food the way you and I can. Kids like Yazan are treated with a liquid diet, allowing them to survive and live life. The blockade did not allow for this diet to reach Yazan. Yazan passed away due to malnutrition. This picture literally haunts me. This isn't an alien. This is a little boy. This will be the fate of the 2 million other people living in Gaza. This is the result of our neutrality, of our silence. I do not doubt that the board sitting in front of me today cares about humanity just as much as I do. I do not doubt the news of innocent children being murdered, obliterated, or starved brings discomfort to your hearts, just as it does to mine. Feeling discomfort, my friends, however, is not enough. It is not enough for us to regard this matter as complicated or controversial. A basic level of research will bring you to clearly understand that there's an oppressor and there's an oppressed. I call on you all to put a resolution on the agenda. The cities of Chicago, Bolingbrook, DuPage Downtownship, and Villa Park have passed this resolution calling for a ceasefire. Let us join these cities, and once again, I repeat, be on the right side of history. I would like to end off with one last saying, and I say this with my chest out and my head held high, under the protection of the First Amendment, from the river to the sea, Palestine will be free. Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ibrahim Said. I am a 20-year-old college student, and more importantly, I am a citizen of this country. Ladies and gentlemen, let us not mistake ignorance for neutrality. Neutrality is just an excuse for a lack of information and a lack of knowledge. In this current day and age, a lack of information is not a justifiable excuse for being uneducated on the problems that plague the innocents of the world. Let us not be ignorant in situations in which there is a clear wrong and right, whether is the oppressor and the oppressed, whether is the killer and the killed. We cannot and must not keep quiet when we are all aware that the people of Palestine are undergoing a genocide. Ladies and gentlemen, I am the youth and future of this country, and I speak on behalf of the youth and every single individual that truly desires peace. Let us fight for Palestine till its liberation. Let us fight for Palestine until justice prevails. Let us work together to create a ceasefire resolution. Let us continue to speak out with our voices and actions until Palestine is free. The world is waking up and change is inevitable. So I ask you, the board of Batavia, let us be on the right side of history. Let us be the pioneers of a new world, a world of peace, a world where Palestinians roam their land freely. You know, I've heard many people tell me that these meetings won't affect international affairs, and I say to these individuals, these meetings are Brits that are building a new world. So let us do our duty and lay our brick down for a free Palestine. Let us vote for a ceasefire resolution. Let us join our neighboring cities and enforce a much-needed change. And like it or not, if we do not do every single thing in our power to help the innocent in Palestine, and I abhor in saying this, we have blood on our hands. And I will end off with one last saying, and I say this with my chest out and my head held up high, under the protection of the First Amendment right, from the river to the sea, Palestine will be free.
All right, hello. I have a bit of a sore throat, so I apologize. My name is Sidney Mock. I'm a resident here at Batavia. You know, I went to McWayne, I went to Tava Middle School, Tava High School. I am a graduate, 18 years old. I work for the Park District as an after-school counselor. And yeah, I just think and believe that regardless of if any real action is made, I think 10, 20 years from now, I think that we need to stand on the moral side of what was right and to address, you know, the barbarous action that is being committed right now, that we all have a role to play. And yeah, I mean, it, you know, when the war in the Ukraine started, I saw no problem with people showing their support and pride to, you know, to friend, you know, the rights of Ukrainians, and I think that it would be just hypocritical for us at least not to do the same. So I hope that we, you consider pushing towards a, a vote for a ceasefire resolution as they did in Chicago.
First, thank you so much for having a forum open for the public to speak. My name is Catalina Rodriguez, and I'm an attorney by trade, but I'm also a mother of two young boys, a three-year-old and an eight-year-old. And I stand here to ask that you please consider adding the ceasefire resolution onto your agenda next, next meeting, and to work with your constituents to accept a declaration asking for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza, an immediate humanitarian aid to the people of Gaza. As an ally to the Palestinian community, I can attest that for the past five months, they have been nothing short but of an out-of-body experience. Seeing a genocide on my phone from the, while surrounded by the comforts of my home and the safety of my own children, has been core-shaking and truly made me reevaluate everything that I truly believed in. I understood that there was injustice that people of color have endured, but not knowing to the degree that the Palestinian people have suffered by an occupation and siege. I saw my husband, my son, my mother, my uncle, and all of those faces in the many videos of this complete slaughter and disregard for life of those innocent Palestinians, and I cannot understand how this could be occurring. And I'm not naive enough to think that such atrocities cannot occur around the world, especially when a powerhouse country wages war, but what I was most shocked was to see the lack of humanitarian response to these atrocities. And it's as if people could just turn off their humanity switch, and as long as it didn't directly impact them, it was just something that happened at some other country. No different than many generations' worth of war, lives get lost, but we don't care. Well, we don't see it that way, and we have to look at it differently as an American society. Luckily, we live in this different time where we're able to have a different level of access of people and their experiences. And so for once, we are seeing how our tax dollars are being put to work, and I, for one, do not consent to this genocide and the irresponsible use of my tax dollars. I understand that there are many local governments that feel as if making such resolutions will not directly impact foreign policies or affairs, but what we do need to understand is that in order to impact state representatives, we must show them that we stand united on this issue on a local level. This was actually communicated to us by our current Congressman Bill Foster, that he himself said if local government made such resolutions, it would get the attention on a federal level. Batavia is a town that has shown growth and unity by passing the Peace on Earth Act, and with that as a basis, passing a ceasefire resolution is in line with the town and its constituent sentiment. We need to send a message that Batavia and the state of Illinois does not condone the killing of civilians, civilians, and our tax dollars should not be spent in such an inhumane manner. We need to send a message to our fellow Palestinian neighbors that we do not condone this recklessness and demand a ceasefire so humanitarian aid can enter Gaza. Right now, 25-plus children have died of malnutrition. Millions are nearing, famine and bombs keep dropping. We need to stand united and demand a change. We have the ability when we are working together. This is the message I'm teaching my children, and I ask that each one of you today, please look into your hearts and let your moral compass lead you to make the right decision, and please add the ceasefire resolution on your next meeting agenda.
Good evening. My name is Saleh Khalid, Mr. Mayor and Alderman. I've been a resident of the Fox Valley region for the past 26 years. I am here as a Muslim-American. Normally, I would never attempt to speak on behalf of such a diverse community. Muslim-Americans are of different colors, different ethnicities, different political affiliations, and have varying degrees of religiosity. That being said, in this moment, we are united in our grief for the people of Gaza. We are united in our anger about the genocide that is now in its sixth month, and we are united in our profound disillusionment with their government, which is not only failing to condemn the slaughter, but is arming the perpetrator and providing cover for its crimes. Why are the deaths of 30,000 Palestinians not enough for the Biden administration to call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire? We can't understand why the deaths of Palestinian civilians failed to inspire the same level of concern from our government as concern for Israeli civilians and Ukrainian civilians. Is the reason for this double standard that Palestinians are Arab and overwhelmingly Muslim? Whether it's rooted in Islamophobia or anti-Arab racism, opposition to a ceasefire, whether explicit or silent, is support for the continued suffering of Palestinians. For months, Muslim-Americans and our allies have been flooding congressional offices with phone calls, emails, and requests for in-person meetings. Our pleas for a ceasefire are falling on deaf ears, which is why we are coming to you, our municipal representatives, to amplify our voices. The resolution of a municipal council representing thousands of constituents carries more weight and cannot be as easily dismissed by a congressman or senator. I'm fully aware that foreign policy is exclusively the responsibility of the federal government, but federal policymakers are elected by and answerable to local communities such as ours. What's happening in Gaza is absolutely a local issue relevant to Batavia because the suffering of its 2 million residents is enabled by $3.8 billion of military aid that the U.S. provides annually to Israel, $360,000 of which comes from Batavia taxpayers. As financial stewards for the tax dollars of Batavia citizens, you would be well within your right to comment on how these, on how those $360,000 from Batavia taxpayers are being spent. As someone who believes all human life is sacred, I also want to emphasize that a ceasefire is what will best facilitate the release of Israeli hostages. In fact, at this point, more hostages have been killed by Israel's military campaign than have been freed by it. During the week-long temporary ceasefire that was in place last November, 105 hostages were released by Hamas and returned safely to their families. In other words, seven days of ceasefire resulted in zero hostages killed and 105 released. However, in more than 150 days of war, only three hostages have been rescued and four killed. According to Palestinian reports, the number of hostages killed by indiscriminate Israeli airstrikes includes an additional 53 victims. Let me be clear, a ceasefire is objectively a pro-hostage position because it ensures the survival of the hostages. A ceasefire would protect Israeli hostages from the same bombing and starvation that Palestinians are currently facing. The families of Israeli hostages are aware of this, which is why they are pressuring the Netanyahu government very publicly to pursue every option for their loved ones, including negotiations for a ceasefire. Please, for the sake of both Palestinians and Israelis in harm's way, I urge you to pass a resolution for immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. Thank you for your time.
We have a question from another alderman that's online. Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you, Alan. I appreciate you starting off by saying that we should definitely take this up at the next committee meeting. We typically don't, as some of the speakers have mentioned, delve into international politics. That said, they certainly have made some good points. That said, they certainly have made some good points. We have taken up national issues at this level for this very reason, to support resolutions, to tell the people above us that do have authority, power, money, and influence to do the right thing. I'm going to be in Springfield in roughly a month, where we'll be in front of legislators, House Majority Leaders. I have no problem bringing a resolution, should we pass one, to the representatives that should be doing their jobs and taking this matter up. So if there are no other speakers and we do place this on an agenda, I would fully support it and say we need to get news of our support out there so others can can join us. Metro West Cog represents a million, almost a million residents in our area. And if we could get Metro West to join us in this, it would give us some leverage to show the representatives that this is an issue that we do care about. So I would, I would fully support this and would encourage to discuss this even briefly at future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I'm going to let you speak, one more speaker, and then we're going to move on because we have a giant agenda for this evening. And, you know, we will put this on, I believe we're probably going to do a special call meeting, a single item after our next city council meeting.
Yes, that one's already taken. So that would be the April first, I'm sorry. Yeah, maybe this would be April 1st.
April 1st. It's a single agenda item so that we can give the time that we want to go through, and we're not bound by anything else that's on the agenda to hold us back from a discussion. So we'll do that after the next city council meeting, have a special call meeting for that.
Good evening, council members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Maryam Othman, and I am an American Palestinian American. I don't have a prepared speech tonight, so I'm just going to speak from the heart, and hopefully I can reach your hearts. I'm not going to regurgitate everything that's been said about the bombing, the indiscriminate killing of innocent children, women, and men. I'm not going to speak about the unnatural, horrific starvation that is happening. It is not due to an earthquake. It is not due to a natural cause. It is a premeditated weapon of war that is being used against innocent Palestinians in Gaza. My soul is scarred. For the first time in history, a new acronym has been developed as a result of what's happening in Gaza. And that acronym is W C N S F. Do you know what that stands for? It stands for Wounded Child No Surviving Family. Imagine that, a child who is wounded and who is dealing with the suffering of his injuries and his wounds. Imagine the trauma that he has to face when he finds out or when he is told that his mother, his father, his siblings, brothers, sisters, his grandparents on both sides, his aunts and uncles on both sides, his cousins, his whole entire family has been wiped out, and he is the only remaining survivor. And if he is lucky, he might survive the rest of this war. And so I want to reach out to you. I hope this mars your soul as well as a human being. We cannot watch because everything is happening in front of us, on our screens, on our TVs, on our magazines, in our newspapers. We cannot turn away. And so I implore you, I reach out to your humanity, please put it on your agenda, and not just put it on your agenda, but pass it, vote to pass it, a complete immediate ceasefire that will benefit both sides. If Gazans are starving, you can also be sure that the hostages are starving. If Gazans are dying from bombs, you can also be sure that the hostages are being killed by those same bombs. Use your humanity. Let's stop this aggression. Let's stop this nightmare. Thank you so much for your time.
Hey, do we have anybody else from the public for any other items that are not on the agenda tonight before we move into the agenda? Yes.
Martin, could you forward the proclamation to city staff, please, to have that for the discussion? Thank you.
We will then move on to item number seven, which is Resolution 24046R, Resolution Adopting the Batavia Fox River Corridor Master Plan.
Yes, we've been working on this project for quite some time, and it, you know, began with the Hitchcock Group taking a look at existing plans and studies that had been done, as well as other documents like our comprehensive plan. There was a group of stakeholders that were interviewed in the beginning of the project. There were many different outreach opportunities for the general public to give their input into this plan. We did hit a speed bump where the Park District asked the Hitchcock Group to do an additional study that would look a little bit deeper into the types of amenities that they might do with versus the concept A versus the kind of combination concept B and E. And once that was concluded, the Park District themselves voted to go along with that concept B. And then we had discussions late last summer to agree that so that we can move this, this process forward, that concept B would be the plan that would end up as part of our master plan, because there's a lot more to this than just the removal of the dam in that area. There are much more areas of the Batavia Corridor of the Fox River that this would also affect. And so what you have before you today is the Batavia Fox River Corridor Master Plan, which includes that concept B. It does provide a, the timeline provided in there is merely how long each one of the steps is estimated to take to implement. The plan also includes the cost estimates, although those cost estimates that were done a couple of years ago. So I think that we could naturally assume that those cost estimates, such and just as the construction costs for everything have escalated in recent years, that those probably would have to be amended as well. So adopting the plan today is saying that, you know, this is a commitment to, if we move forward, these, these are the concepts that we think we would like to see implemented. That is not to say that it is a promise that these things are getting built within a certain period of time, because one of the first steps that we will have to do is Phase One engineering that includes, you know, the feasibility of the project. And then we also do not have a funding source for the projects that are part of this plan. So all of those things, once and if this plan is adopted, those would be the next steps to talk about the when and the how to fund it and, you know, how we want to move forward with this plan. Something else that I do want to bring up is, you know, one potential source of funding for removal of the dam was the Army Corps of Engineers has been conducting a study. They now have a report that says that removal of the low-head dams would improve the safety and ecology of the river. And they believe, they, they want to see full removal. And so they have told me that our project would not be eligible for that funding if we select a concept that has the rock wears, if we're putting something back in after we take the dam out. I also asked them about Concept A, since Concept A also includes building that berm to enclose the pond. And under that circumstances, U.S. Army Corps said they would assist us with the dam removal part of that, but anything else associated that with that would fall onto the city, those costs. So if, does anybody have any questions for me?
Laura, can you just clarify? Because I thought I was under the original impression that if we went with Option B, that the Army Corps of Engineers wouldn't 100% fund, but that there would still be some funding from them. I thought it was a percentage.
No, they, when we went to a meeting back in November for the Fox River Study Group, it was their annual meeting, and both Army Corps of Engineers were there, as well as IDNR, and they said that they were only going to fund removal. Now, when we, when we talked with IDNR previously, before the study had been completed, IDNR told us that the funding would be reduced if we selected Concept B, but there would still be some contribution. So it was on the state side of things. But now that U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has taken the position of the wanting the full removals, IDNR has said that they are going to prioritize the full removal projects before they provide funding to the other projects that are not full removal. So that doesn't mean that we would be eliminated from funding. It just means other dams would come before ours in the event that there were full removal projects to be done.
And also just to clarify for everybody in the room, like, that funding was just a portion of this entire project. It was, it's not the entire thing, it was just...
Any funding that they were talking about was only for dam removal and restoration associated with dam removal. So any other added costs of the project, we would have borne anyway.
I still support moving forward with this plan since we're this far in it and then just going through the first phase of engineering and making decisions from there.
Sounds good. I think Abby hit her hand up next.
You answered it.
Okay, thanks.
Well, ma'am, I don't want to go through this whole discussion again, but as I've said my position was in the past, I support Concept A, I'm against Concept B, and even now hearing that we're even going to get less money than we thought, I am going to be voting no for this resolution.
On the budget listed in the master plan report here towards the end, it lists dam removal, modification rather, as a line item. Is that the estimated city cost? And then the rest of it's Park District funded? Or is there a split there that I know?
No one has discussed how the cost of these things would be split between the two groups, nor who would own something that in the event that Concept B is the concept that we go with, who would be responsible for owning it, maintaining it, ensuring against the risks?
Yeah, I'm obviously in support of this, I think, especially going through the feasibility and the engineering that will come back with us and come back to us and give us some information on what we could potentially expect from an economic gain out of it. It is an investment, just like the Woonorf is an investment, just like all the other things in, in the plan, our investments in the community to make it a destination, some of these things make it a destination, some of these things are things just for, there are going to be more for residents. So I'm definitely in favor of moving forward and seeing, seeing what happens. Obviously, there's no guarantee. I mean, if it comes back and somebody says, hey, it's going to cost $20 million, well, that's going to be, that's a, that's a different question at that time. If it comes back and it's like, oh, you can actually do it for less than you projected for these reasons. So I wouldn't want to dismiss anything just because we don't have funding, but we don't even know, those things can change too. So that's, that's why I would be in favor of this, so.
Just wanted to say, I think it's, you know, this is much more than just the dam. This is a master plan for a section of the river that we could see from the top of this building from, you know, blocks and blocks away at either end. And I think it's important to realize and remember that that's more, you know, an overarching thing that we have to think about and be concerned with and not just doing one small section of it or one piece of it. That, that all has to play a part in the decisions that we make each and every city council budget year in, in our plans and in trying to figure out how we're going to pay for what we're eventually going to do or not do. I think it's really important that we remember that and that the effects of this are going to last for generations after we're done with it. I'm sure they didn't think about it when they built all these factories all over the island here and the sides of the river and channeled the water wherever they could to make things happen. They weren't concerned about what happens in 100 years. I think we think about that. And that's something that we have to remember, that that is what this is about, over and above, trying to preserve the pond, save the dam, whatever you want to say. That that's the reality is we have to think about what happens in 20, 50, and 100 years with this town. And that's something that I try to keep reminding myself as I look at these and think about how we're ever going to get any of this done.
Abby?
So with the next step being Phase One and funding, are we looking holistically at the whole plan when we're looking at funding? And so, you know, Items A through O on all of these different pages? Or is it just the dam for now?
We're looking at it holistically, but it was sort of, the dam was a big, major first thing that we needed to tackle so that Hitchcock Design Group could understand what our portion of the waterway was going to look like. So they knew what kind of canvas they were going to put everything else on.
But how much of it will, if it's $20 million, if we end up going with a different option? You know, A through O and A through N don't change too much compared to the different options we were given at that last discussion with Hitchcock. Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to think of it as a small part because I am in support of Option A still, want to see a plan move forward so that we can get all of those other things, not so much just focused. I fear that this whole plan will sit on the shelf like some other plans have done, go unfunded, go unplanned for, because we've spent all of our money, A, on Option B, or because once we didn't get Option B, then it all fell apart anyway.
Question though on that is, all those other lettered items, those are, that's the Park District, this is all on their properties. This is not, those aren't things that the city would be installing. I mean, that's, those are Park District amenities. We're involved because of the dam, and we own the dam. That's the only reason that we would be part of it. So if a full, this full thing were $40 million and a portion of it was the dam, well, that's, that's the, let's say 20 million was the dam, we'll just make it even. The other 20 million's got to go from the Park District. They got to figure out what they want to do and when they want to do it. This is just like any other downtown development plan, probably take 30 years for this to complete, to be realized.
Just like all the other plans, it's still the same pot of money that you're pulling from. So whether the Park District is pulling upon it or the city's pulling from it, it's all the same residents. So we're pulling either 40 million or we're pulling 20 million, that's still the same, we're tapping the same source for all of that.
Sure, but then the Park District would make, would need to make decisions based on where they want, what services they want to provide, just like the Park District just tried for a long time to have a rec center and has not done it. So they seem to be focusing on other things right now. So they would have, their, their vision would be different if they got a, if they got a rec center. They wouldn't be able to, they may not even be considering doing this.
In terms of the government funding, I know that we've had some discussions about the fact that money doesn't sit around forever. And I know that there was some discussion about when this might go away. And I don't know if we have a new deadline on that or any indication as to when that funding might disappear, but another fear I have that Alderman Beck was just expressing is this could sit around for a while, and then if it's determined that this Option B is not viable, we might not even have that government money for Option A anyway, which means we just lost an opportunity to get it removed for free.
Done that once already. There was money in there to do several dams on the Fox River, and because Yorkville was ready to go before we were, they got the money. And they got theirs done. So, you know, that's the reality of what it is. And, you know, I guess that's going to be, to me, the big question when we get to that point to make an actual physical start of a project is where the money comes from and what's available out there. And I think now, like, the state is, IDNR has backed off because they have a level above them at the Army Corps saying that this is what they want to do. Army Corps wants to do with the river. And that's...
And they're trying to align.
Right, and they're trying to figure out how they can work together and do the things that the public wants in the areas that they want, and then do what they think is best for the river.
Yeah.
I do want to say that we've discussed this for hours and hours and hours to get to this point, and I don't really want to rehash it all out. I also want to say to the members in the audience who... the members in the audience who came and spoke earlier, I do appreciate how kind of insensitive this feels to jump from talking about people dying and being murdered and everything going on over there, and to us now talking about something that feels so trivial. And I just appreciate you guys being patient with that, so, thank you.
Yeah, I, certainly, I've been on record for this for a long time, and I'm, my principal position is, take the dam out, but we got to save the Depot Pond. The Depot Pond is a historical significant landmark in downtown Batavia. Many people have spent, I think, accumulatively multi-millions of dollars to build buildings and residents to live next to that water feature. And if you took this all out the wrong way, you could drain the Depot Pond, you'd have a mud hole there. So I think there is some obligation there. Beyond that, I'm not going to name them, but there are at least two individuals who are no longer with us in this town, who in their wills or in their disposition of their estates, probably donated over $4 million to the community of Batavia to build the pond area, to build the building that's out there, and to do some other work on the Fox River. Not many other towns have a donation of over $4 million from residents to do features on their riverbank, but we have that in Batavia. And I certainly don't want to send a message to future people who may want to do something in Batavia to say, well, these people gave $4 million, and then the city council just sat here and watched it wash away. I think that would be one heck of a very poor legacy for this council to put itself on, and that's certainly one I don't want to be any part of. So I just want you to know, you know, if you look at the Depot Pond, it was the front cover of the Saturday Evening Post in 1958, with the scene of the ice skating there. Every, every year when we have the high school prom, almost all the prom goers come in their tuxedos and their dresses and come down, and they have pictures taken with the pond in the background. And then there's one big group shot of everybody at the pond, and everybody comes down and enjoys it. And then there's, I know, a number of people have died, and they've asked to be cremated, and their ashes have been brought down here and quietly disposed of in the pond or in the, up at the front there by the river. So it becomes an area where people want to be discharged for the, what's remaining of them into the water. So there's just a lot of features about this pond and this river through downtown Batavia that I think Batavia needs to have some appreciation for. And we've got some other interesting things over here on the east bank, the old Challenge Factory is probably, and there's people come to my office with some regularity and describe that as one of the great redevelopment opportunities in the Fox River Valley. And the day will come, I think, when that will happen. And you certainly don't want to do anything that kind of spoils that. So I, I think there's some decision to be made here, but I'm not sure we're really quite ready at this moment to make that decision. The other thing I will tell you is, knowing all the mayors that live from all the towns in the Fox River, everybody's got kind of this same problem if they got a dam. Go up and talk to St. Charles, they've got a major debate going on up there. Geneva's got one going. Aurora's had some issues, conversations with me recently about stuff. So, I mean, there's a lot of towns that are piling up their costs of what it's going to be to take all these dams out, and there's some doubters in, in, in the area right now that doubt whether, when push comes to shove, that the money's going to be on the table from the state or federal government to pay for all this dam removal.
Take questions from the public, comment?
My name is Carl Teskey. I'd just like to take a couple minutes of your time for a comment. Regardless of what Batavia decides to do, it's not going to be free. Even if it's just taking out the dam, it's going to cost you money. So you definitely have some big issues to, hurdles to overcome. My big issue is, I've been here paddling on the Fox River for over 25 years now. So I've seen the river grow, the river recede, et cetera, in good and bad times. One thing you seriously have to consider is the recreational possibilities that you may or may not have, depending upon your decision. The pool above the dam is very significant in that it allows people in paddlecraft, motorized boats, et cetera, to use the river. One of the estimates from the Army Corps of Engineers is that when they take out a dam, the river could lose its width up to 60% of what is now. If that is true, or even 40%, there will be no recreational capabilities on the Fox River here in Batavia. Prime example is last July. We've, we've had a, a big drought the last few years, and the river in places even like St. Charles, where it's relatively deep and they have good powerboats, powerboating was extremely limited. Even canoes and kayaks had various big issues. So when the Army Corps of Engineers says, and other entities state that it's going to allow for paddling or motorboat traffic through the Fox River, that's a lie. One last thing to consider also is that a number of things, statements that the Army Corps of Engineers is making is based on studies, not necessarily on facts. So if you were to go back to these studies, many are 10 years or older, you will find that conditions now are a lot different. One of the issues is water clarity and purity. That has changed dramatically here along the Fox River in the last 10 years. That type of information is not available in the Army Corps of Engineers study. So I plead you to really think about this, and not just, we're going to take out the dam and it's going to be free, because it will not. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marla Schofer, and I live on the Fox River in Geneva, and I commuted here today by kayak. I'm a pretty avid kayaker, and very often paddle this whole stretch of river and portage the dam. I looked at your master plan, and I think it's very exciting. And, and I like the idea of kind of creating a destination for kayakers and canoeers. And what I, are you, who's Lehman? I emailed you earlier about wanting to somewhat be involved when, you know, when you get to the point of decisions. I have a group of, you know, community of people that regularly kayak this area, and we'd love to be able to provide input, just to make sure that it meets the needs of canoeers and kayakers. And maybe you've done that, but for example, if there are the rockweers, that they're wide enough so someone doesn't get stuck on it, so it doesn't end up like Aurora canoe shoot kind of situation. And things like a canoe and kayak launch area, whether it's cement or, or dirt, you know, seeing if there could be access on each side of the river, just, just to kind of look at things and give some feedback. So I'm wondering how I might be able to get on some kind of input committee. And I know you're probably...
You have her contact information, could forward it to me?
I do, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
At the moment, do we, we don't really have an input committee...
No.
...currently.
No, that, that will be part of a next stage of, of all of this.
Yeah, I would think it would be great if it could be people that are avid canoeers and kayakers that could provide input on that. Okay.
I told you I'd be dead before this is settled. Couple things. First, the evening has a definite turn to it. Want to respond to the alderman here. You know, at times, I'm so old, I want to think I'm not part of the world. So this was a moment to remember. So, thank you, everyone. You know, we keep having wars, and we keep going why, and we are so detached here at times. And so we can turn on our news, we can watch it. What we've done to ourselves and to our culture is just amazing and appalling. You'd think we've learned something, but I guess we haven't. Okay, enough of that. Couple things real quick. This is a little disjointed, because I didn't expect to hear this about the dam and the engineers and what they said. I'm sure it was shocking for you as well. I'm very old. I used to run a program for schizophrenics and alcoholics in Uptown, when there was the Great Society, and everybody was kicked out of the hospitals. And if you were on Prolixin, you could be on the street unless you got off your meds, then you were literally on the street. I cannot tell you the number of times the state didn't have money. It goes on all the time. I never trusted them then, I don't trust them now. That's one. Two, I would really like to hear from some of the towns where the dams have been taken out. Not from the Sierra Club, not from environmental groups, but from the people where this happened, was it worth it? Was it worth the money? Did they like the outcome? Did it give them what they want? Has it improved their life? Was it worth the cash spent? Three, just if you're going to remodel your house, which I have done many times, because I've been in that house there 35 years, and God knows, my neighbors have spent more money than I have, I want to know, people that have paid for this, have done this, and I want to have somebody come in and says they can do this, they have a history of doing it. You know, if you were going to remodel your house, wouldn't you get somebody in that's done it before, to tell you the pros and cons, give you more feedback? The Department of Engineering, you know, there's no negotiation. There's no one that can go above. We don't have a representative here that can say something about, you know what, we want a middle ground here. We don't like being told just what to do. We want to do what's going to work for our community. We've labored on this, we've thought on this, we're tired of this. We want to move forward on what we have agreed to. Is there not a middle ground? So I think there's some points there I really want to look at, as to kind of how we're expanding, where we're going. And lastly, what are people going to do north of us? You know, if Geneva and St. Charles don't pull their dam, and we pull our dam, how's that going to fit? How's that going to work in the whole picture thing? You know, there's still this little fantasy in the back of my brain that we pass up, you know, put in a, a fish ladder, repair the dam, run some cables there, cheaper outcome, do it. But we may be well past all that. But I do think we have some other things to look at, and especially how we can move forward in a way that makes sense by how people were happy with an outcome versus one where we're being punished repeatedly and struggling like this. So whatever legislators can get involved, because you can say we have a plan with the Department of Engineering, why'd they come in? Exactly how much money are they putting in? Is it worth taking their money? If they can't guarantee you when they're going to do it, then when will it ever get done? How long will we sit? When I used to do a lot of group therapy, one of the things that's always interesting, there were two groups. There's a group here, and then there's a group that takes side out of here. And when I first got involved with this, I would sit and talk to people here, I'd come up, and then I'd go out there and ask some of the aldermen what they thought. And they said, nobody cares. As long as there's water out there, nothing's ever going to pass, nothing's ever going to change. The water level is high right now. So I really think some of these points need to be kind of looked at. Many people are telling me, leave it all alone, we don't care. We don't want anything done. Because if water keeps coming, it keeps going, that's slowly going to break away. But until that actually crisis is out, people don't want to deal with it. Again, I apologize for being sort of ad hoc about this, a little all over the place, but I was very surprised by what you opened with. But I think a couple of these points I'm saying make some sense. To really look at who's satisfied, look what's going to happen north of here. If they can't guarantee us when they're going to do something, would you buy a car from somebody like that? I wouldn't. And I think whatever legislators we have here that can go back to the engineering department, or move up politically to get whatever guarantees we need, that's what we need to do. I don't want to do a deal with somebody I don't trust. Okay, thanks.
So there was an article in the Daily Herald today that Geneva has pushed off the decision about what they're going to do with their dam to 2025. I think they said March of 2025. And then St. Charles has just formed a committee. I don't know what the timeframe looks like for that, but it sounds like it'll probably be quite a long time before we hear what they're going to be doing with their dams.
And again, both of those towns, as I understand, own their dams?
No. Geneva's dam is owned by the Department of Natural Resources.
Thank you. And then St. Charles?
They own their dam.
Yeah. Because north of that, the paddle boats, all that area, all that stuff will change greatly by what's determined. And again, if you even go farther enough to Algonquin, they're safe. They had a politician in the Carver deal a long time ago, where you're not going to touch their dam, right? Yeah. So it's a bit of politics as well.
Just on that note, I actually had just pulled up the article in the King County about St. Charles, because I remember reading about their task force. And it says that they need to make a commitment on what they plan by October about their dam, so.
Can you use the microphone?
We need to use the mic, because it has to be recorded.
Number one is, a friend of mine is on that committee, that's doing the exploration. They have to come up with what their recommendation is and feedback from community by the end of this year, not October. And that was directly from the mayor and the city council. The other thing is, St. Charles Dam is owned by the DNR, not St. Charles.
Sorry. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
We're the lucky ones.
We tried to give ours to the DNR, they wouldn't take it.
Yeah, we tried.
They literally helped prove that we had title to the dam.
And don't they have to assume ownership if they don't take it out? Isn't that part of the Army Corps' report, is that if they don't take ownership, if they don't take it out, they will have the same situation we're in?
Hi, I'm Carolyn Weir. Yes, I would urge you to, to pass this plan quickly. Our dam is failing, as you probably all know. It's failing rapidly. It's going to be gone very soon. And then we're going to be in this emergency situation, oh, now the pond really is gone. Oh, golly, well, I didn't think it was going to happen that fast. So, I mean, we can't just keep talking and talking and talking and never move forward. So I would hope that engineering, that you will be able to pass this plan. Engineering can be started quickly. And if you are going to do some kind of a, a, a input committee, I would love to be on part of that. I, I think it's time to start getting all of those things going. Because I'm, I'm sure you guys are tired of talking about this. It'd be nice to, like, have some facts and figures, and hey, look, look what we're going to do. So thank you for all your time. I know you're all bored, but, you know, there's just so many great economic opportunities here by keeping the, the pond and the water that we have in our, our beautiful river, in our beautiful city. So, thank you.
Okay, with that discussion being over with, I will make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution 2024-046, our resolution adopting the Batavia Fox River Corridor Master Plan.
Second?
Motion by Wolf, second by Ewer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nope.
Aye.
Two, two opposed. Okay. All right, then we will move on to item number eight, which is Ordinance 2024-013, amending the city code to define gaming parlors and restrict advertising.
Good evening, everyone. Before you tonight, you have three ordinances. Each one deals with a different policy matter regarding video gaming. The first ordinance is 2024-013, which defines gaming parlors in cafes and restricts advertising for license holders on the outside of their facilities. So it would prohibit them from advertising that there are video gaming terminals located at their establishment via signs, billboards, folding boards, window advertisements, and other similar things. Ordinance 2024-014 restricts the number of video gaming terminals on a square foot basis for new applicants and new operators, unless their license were elapsed for a period of one year. And then Ordinance 2024-015 is designed to be a starting point conversation for you all at capping the number of video gaming establishments. We put the number out at 15. You, you should all feel free to move that up or down as you see fit, and depending on where votes are on that. Additionally, we define a gaming parlor as where the majority of act, so the activity or activities that make up a majority of revenue. So upon submitting their annual renewal forms, we would ask them to provide information as to receipts for food, alcohol, et cetera, and then receipts for gaming. If the determination is that more than half the revenue came from gaming, they would be declared a gaming parlor and would no longer be eligible for a video gaming license. I'm happy to answer any questions about this. We don't anticipate that the, if you did pass the ordinance on video gaming cafes or parlors, we believe that determination would take place in the next renewal year. So when they submit information for 2025 is when that would come up.
Who wants to start? Okay, I'll start. I guess, you know, I've kind of been at the, from the beginning of this, thinking that we kind of leave the regulations alone. The gaming parlor one, I agree with. Restricting advertising, I don't know...
I don't know that advertising is what draws most of the people to use these anyway. Just asking some of the business owners that have them, or what I've watched myself when I've been there, to try to just, from the outside, look and see how it happens. And asking actually several people how they pick which games they go play and where they go play and, you know, how they utilize these. As far as the numbers that's on us, however, we want to decide, you know, any limits on them. Square footage, I think with, if we kept five machines only, square footage wouldn't be something we would have to restrict or change because you really can't have them in that smaller, you know, of an area if you're going to have five machines or up to five machines. If you don't have the room, you're going to have to go to smaller amount of machines. I don't, I don't see us having to get overly into this to try to decide a way to restrict some of the things that we've talked about. So I'm trying to somewhat hands-off, but I can understand and I can agree with some of the things we've talked about. Mark?
Yeah, the square footage thing, I agree. I don't know that it's going to make a tremendous difference after I thought about it for a while. The advertising kind of ticks one of the boxes for me, which is, is the look and feel of the city when I go past Rosati's, for example, and there's a neon sign, and then at least, or I think it's 25% is all they can do, but you can cover 25% of the window in signs that say video gaming and everything. That's the thing that I think detracts from what I'd like to see as a town. And I don't want to say I've given up on trying to get rid of them, but the best I would say would be to cap it at the current number. So I would suggest to cap it at 11. So.
Mark, did you suggest a number?
The current, which is 11.
11.
It may be helpful for us to go ordinance by ordinance. That's partially--
I figured we'd give everybody a chance to talk about it real quick, Max, and then after we got all that out, then we'd go one by one and then make our decisions and be done with it. Because I'm trying to keep us focused and get this done. Chris, go ahead.
I also feel that our current regulations that are in place are sufficient, and I think that we're kind of going after something that's not really an issue here. I think the restrictions and the regulations that we have in place have been sufficient. We've already talked about the number that are here and the length of time that we've had the ability to have people apply for licenses. I don't think there's anything we need to do. I think this is a big red herring and something that is kind of, there's other things that we can address as opposed to this. I think our regulations are sufficient.
Yeah, I would say the only, I'm not a fan of capping the number of establishments. I think if we're going to have it, we're going to have it. And if, you know, because if I come into Batavia and I'm establishment 16, and I got a full kitchen and a big, you know, something that's more profitable than, say, the mom and pop down the shop who's got, or down the road who's got, you know, five machines or four machines or whatever, I'm going to probably look at a different town where I can put machines in, you know, if that's my prerogative. So not a huge fan of that. What was the other thing I was going to say? Oh, yeah, the signage, I think for me is a no-brainer. I think, you know, that, yeah, I think that one's a no-brainer. I don't think we need to advertise it like we're, I mean, we're going to have a casino right down the street. It's not going to be hard to go gamble if you want to. We don't need to be known as any bigger of a gambling place than we will be known as when that thing pops up. So, you know, I'm a fan of that, but when we cap the number of establishment, I just think it, we end up revisiting that one, I almost promise, you know? We're going to either make exceptions or we're going to do something there. And I just think it's an overarching, un-business-friendly type outlook, you know? And, oh, I know the other thing I was going to point out, too, is the 50/50 revenue. I think, you know, I don't know if that's as black and white as it seems, and maybe it's worth taking a step back and looking at like, you know, what that establishment entails. I mean, if they had a down year on whatever, and, you know, people still gamble, unfortunately, at all points in time usually, and, you know, so I don't know. I would want to take a harder look at that in terms of, you know, maybe making that a 60/40 type thing, or a two-strike, three strikes and you're out type deal, or however that looks. But I, you know, I stand with the business owners there where it's hard to punish, you know, kick somebody when they're down type of thing if they had a down year or anything like that. And again, that word spreads. That will spread, no question.
Right. And I think the reason we had that in originally was to try to prevent, you know, the typical gaming parlor--
100%. Maybe we use other language to say, you know, something of the like of, hey, if you don't, I don't know exactly what it is, and I don't want to put it just a random thought out there, but maybe different language than putting it strictly on their books.
And that was a discussion that we had when we originally wrote this ordinance to allow video gaming to try to prevent that. One of them was the liquor license and having to have it for a year. And, you know, the restrictions that were there, and I believe, and I hate that we don't have legal advice here tonight, but that's one of the things that we utilized in there to try to prevent that--
And this language--
--without getting into an area where it caused us to be on the edge or an unknown that hadn't been legally challenged or proven yet.
Oh, it was put in, I'll say, it was 100% put in there to prevent the gaming parlor because they would have to sign a lease and sit on it for a year--
For a year, right.
--until they'd be able to--
That one's a good one.
And nobody is going to--
It was the simplest way to do that without getting--
Thirty-four. Yeah, right.
That's already in place. This, so the language that you see in this ordinance is taken from other municipalities that have sought to define this.
Well, and the fact of the matter is, too, is I don't know the numbers either. So, I mean, obviously, we know some of our gaming numbers, but in terms of these, you know, individual, I know we have some of the business owners here, whether they can speak to that or not, but, you know, maybe it's not even out of the question where it's like, hey, man, we're always going to kill it with food and bev before, you know, our $100,000 in gaming or whatever it might be. I don't know the number.
But that may be one of the things as we go through them line by line, that we just, we don't put that part of it in, but we keep the advertising restriction in there. And just pass that for now.
I think--
And again, we're, I'm trying to maybe getting a little bit ahead of where I thought I would be, but this is what I think, you know, are valid questions to go through when we go through each one of them.
First to the--
Leah?
Can you remind me which liquor license you have to have currently to have video games?
An A, a D, and then also the entertainment. So the Funway has. And separately from the holders of liquor licenses, fraternal organizations, just by being a fraternal organization, have a right to it. They don't need to have a liquor license for one year. And then the other type of establishment would be a truck stop, which the Speedway qualifies as, it's a gas facility that is on three acres or more.
And are we in the process or getting ready to update our liquor code and licensing?
We have for many years.
Okay. And how would that impact or might it impact the type of liquor license that one might have to have video games?
It definitely could impact that, but it, we could draft it in such a way that it mirrors what all of you intend to restrict it to. Because even in a simplified code, it just means like, maybe you have three different types of licenses, but then there are all, a number of different types of uses for the particular licenses, and then you could restrict it to those types of uses.
Because this was something that came up maybe a year ago where we were getting lots of various, a variety of establishments now asking for video games and--
Just like we get a variety of places that ask for the liquor licenses, which is why I think we're on letter L.
I don't know that exact answer.
Do you also have any questions on the side? Abby?
I would, I support the majority revenue piece, the parlor definition. I would also be okay with letting that be a conversation, like, okay, well, open your books from the last two years. Show me that it's a down year. Show me that this isn't just 50% of your revenue.
On your own.
Yeah, exactly. So I'm, I don't know how to, that sounds squishy, I know, in legal terms, but letting that be a conversation, and it's not just one strike, you're out, but looking at past years to say, okay, this was--
These are in cases where we're suspecting that it's a betting parlor. So if it is, you know, walking like a duck and quacking like a duck, we aren't, that's not the situation in which we would do the audit versus every year establishments are doing an affidavit that this is true. And if we suspect that it's not true, we have the right under the statute to ask for documentation. So that's the circumstances. We're really not going to know whether a restaurant that's trying to be a restaurant is not doing that well this year that they ended up with more video gaming revenue. It's going to be somebody's cooking hairdryer, yeah, hairdryer hot dogs with a bucket of beer in the corner, and it's just the five games going all day.
I like that as another control.
Accused.
I like that as an additional control because I do think that our current regulations are too lax. We do have an establishment opening that has not had a liquor license for a year, that has not sat on a lease for a year to prove that this is not keeping them propped up. And they even said this is crucial to our business model, is having the games, which is exactly what I've wanted to avoid. I don't, I don't want to prop up businesses that can't make it on their food and beverage and service and vibe for this town. I just think that that pulls, I think that's a spiral down for the whole environment and the whole downtown. I do, I am speaking about downtown, too. Like, I want the cap at 11 where we are. I would entertain that only, I think we just came up last time, being only in the central business district and letting, you know, putting the cap at 15, but you have to be outside the central business district. Like, let our downtown get some diverse, different offerings in terms of dining establishments because I feel like it's all, they're becoming more similar. I also like the advertising, not because I think it is something that draws people in. I think there are places, when I go to other towns, I know all the restaurants in Batavia, but if, when I go into other towns, especially if I'm with my family, I see the neon or I see the gaming advertised, and I assume this isn't a place that we're going to be comfortable. Like, that's just an assumption I make. I think we would bring more people in to try some restaurants if they didn't see that. I see it as an opposite of, I see it as a deterrent in some cases. There's a lot of families here, so we definitely do better when you can appeal to a mixed age group with some of our restaurants. Yeah.
I'd just like to say, on the topic of business friendliness of the town, Geneva doesn't have video gambling, and I don't think anybody here would argue that they have any trouble attracting business. There are other things we can do, but--
Close down this week.
The business community in Geneva, go speak with them. And how it is working with the city of Geneva. I have met, I have multiple friends that are business owners in Geneva's.
And they've had a lot of closures.
All sound and--
They have a lot of openings, too.
And the reason they don't have--
Cited because of gaming, two of them. Because they couldn't have gaming, they cited that. I'm not saying that that's why they couldn't make it as a business, but, you know, they cited that.
I mean, their restaurant scene is far larger than our restaurant scene, so two out of, it's a much smaller percentage than ours is.
Different layout, different town, but business friendliness.
And I get your point about downtown, but I think that, in my mind, we're thinking about the entire city. You know, whether it be Randall Road or whatever develops on the east side or anywhere else in town, we have to think about that. And if somebody comes in and wants to put in a big investment, and part of their plan is to have the machines for whatever section of their business that they think it complements or enhances, we have to be able to do that. Or I think we need to be able to do that. And honestly, I mean, we had the discussion before we ever passed this, that, oh, you know, disaster's going to happen, we're going to have 25 of these in Batavia in two years. And, you know, we had a lot of people that came in and spoke against it, and were really negative about it, and it just never materialized. You know, we didn't, we didn't have somebody come in and say, I want to, you know, get a liquor license and pull a strip mall section out on Randall Road in an outlot, sit on it for a year, or sell beer there, or whatever. And that didn't happen here. Go to DuPage County, go to Cook County, go to other places, you can see it. And you can see what it does to a strip mall when that happens. But we've never had that happen here. And I think the way we crafted it to set it up made it a deterrent for those type of things to happen. So I'm not afraid of, I'm really not even afraid of picking a limit on it because we did that when we used to always have to wait for somebody to give up a liquor license to get another one in this town when I started on the council. And then I don't remember when we finally did away with that. And it's not like we've had, you know, a liquor license for every building that got built in town. So I'm not worried about the limit.
We have gone from six to 11, though.
Okay.
So--
And how many years?
I'm just saying, it's not like it's been static. It's been, it's been said that it's been static and hasn't really changed, but it's gone from six to 11. So it's nearly doubled, and--
But we've also lost some.
We've gone from six to 11. Doesn't matter how many we've lost. We had six, we have 11. So that's all I'm saying, is that it has grown in size.
Alan?
Your Honor?
Yeah, just one point. I think I, I didn't really strongly support this when it was first done, but, and quite honestly, it has become a significant source of revenue for the city. We get some money off of this deal. And all the conversations that we've had here tonight, I think the bottom line's going to be, where's the money going to come from? And who's, where's the money going to be? Because I know some people who watch government at the state and federal level very, very tightly, and their prediction is that 2025 is going to be the new year of goodbye, and things are going to start to drastically be reduced and nothing new is going to be funded. And if that's the case, you know, we can sit here all night and talk about the dams, but I'm not so sure, barring you folks going out and asking the citizens of Batavia to pass a multimillion-dollar referendum, I'm not so sure those dams are going to be easily paid for. I just choose that as one example of what's going on here. So I kind of agree with Alan a little bit here about how we should probably take it easy on this thing because it, it really hasn't hurt too much from what I can see and tell and from what I read in the police reports and whatever have you. We haven't had a big problem, and there's been responsible management of the liquor licenses. I added up, I signed all the new licenses for the community this afternoon, and when I got, there's a, it says right on the license how much they're paying. When I added them all up, I signed $90,000 in liquor licenses today. Now, that's all money for the general fund of Batavia, and I'm not a drinker myself, but as, I would tell you, that's a, that's a nice source of revenue for the community of Batavia to have.
Alan, each one of those licenses provides a job for somebody that has to sell it, somebody that has to stock it, somebody that has to produce it, somebody that has to deliver it. And I feel the same thing when we add this ability for a business to have the gaming is, all those machines have to be made, all they have to be maintained, they have to be delivered, they have to be serviced. Everybody that has to work in those, you know, businesses, maybe it's one more job that's in that business. Maybe it's one better job that's in that business. Maybe that business gets to expand in a year or two because they have those. All those things, to me, play a part in why I make the decision that I think is right to keep this in the community and to have it allowed on a fair, you know, plane for everybody to be able to use.
Leah?
Can I just ask then for ordinance number, or agenda number nine, 2024-14? Are we going to vote?
We're, I was going to start, I was going to start from the beginning.
Well, actually, I just have a question. It's the next one, about capping the number. Are we going to vote for that or against it?
We're going to vote on each one separately.
And then if we, if we vote against capping it, is it then just open?
Or does it stay at 11?
It stays, it's, it would stay at what the original ordinance was. These are only ordinances to modify what we have currently as a code.
Right. So remind me, our current ordinance, what does it say about numbers?
Nothing.
Oh, nothing. It says nothing.
It says nothing.
There's no limit.
There's a 11 in existence.
There's no limit.
There's a 11 in existence, but there is no limit.
Everyone can have it.
So if we vote against right now, capping at 15, then it will just stay open?
As asked for, yes. There would be no limit on them. And that's what I was going to say next. If we're done with discussion here, I don't know if I want to do the businesses or anybody in the audience that wants to talk about this or should go through each one and then let people speak about it. I'm not really sure how.
Go through each one and talk about them and not, but not vote yet.
Well, no. Yeah, we've already talked about them and I guess now if we could keep it to real short comments, if the public would like to come up and talk about what we've discussed and what ordinances we have in front of us, then at that point, after you guys are done, a couple of minutes apiece, then we'll go through and go through them one at a time, decide up or down, modified whatever, and we'll vote on those tonight. So we get that done.
Hi, I'm Jeremy Truex, I own JT's Tavern and Tap in Batavia. I wanted to touch on just one thing that kind of is kind of geared towards us and that comes in with the square footage. I know that based on the ordinance from what I read, there would be a legacy clause, something along lines that it wouldn't affect me because I'm already in business. And while I'm thankful for that and okay with that, I guess I'd like to bring it to your attention, kind of why someone owns a business and that's to create revenue for their family in, on a day-to-day basis, but also when they're getting ready to retire and sell their business, they'd like to sell the business for more than what they bought it for. That is the goal. And I think by doing this and not having something in there that allows for anyone who purchases my business, should I choose to sell it, to be allowed that same legacy clause, you're basically cutting my valuation in half. You're taking away a source of revenue from my business that I could use to increase the purchase price. And I don't know if that's been talked about with regards to putting a limit on gaming per square footage. If you put a limit on it, my gaming would go from five machines probably to two machines. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention because I, we were, we were brought up in the conversation the last time this was done as being a small business, small square footage. So I wanted to come in from the business standpoint and kind of just make, make you guys aware of, of what we think about as business owners. We don't think about necessarily living in the day. You've got to be prepared for months, years in the future. So to, to limit the video gaming machines based on square footage, when I go to sell my business, would the person that is buying my business be grandfathered in to continue to operate the way that I was operating my business prior? I guess that's a question for you guys. The other thing is I think you're going to get into a big black and white area when it comes to revenue for food and liquor versus gaming. Cause it is very, very feasible that I would do, and these are just, these are just numbers I'm throwing out. I'm hoping to beat all of these numbers that I'm throwing out, but it's very feasible that I do $300,000 in food and alcohol in a year and I also do $150,000 in gaming. And I'm going to turn in my video gaming license and you're going to tell me that because of the 50/50 split, I am considered a video gaming parlor when I've got $300,000 worth of food and alcohol sales to back that I am actually a legitimate restaurant and bar.
Would that be two to one then?
It would be 50%, which is what you guys are talking about, right?
You'd have to have $300,000 in gaming.
No, you'd have to make more money on the video games than you do on your food or alcohol.
You have to make more money on the video games than alcohol, not just 50%.
So if you did $300,000.
Then I read, I read, I read that wrong.
$300,000 in gaming and $150,000 in alcohol.
If it incorporated more than half of your overall sales, meaning my overall sales were 300 and my video gaming is 150, I'd be considered a quote unquote parlor.
But that's good to know. Those are the numbers in your head, 150 on gaming, 300 on food and alcohol.
I hope to go way above that, but that's, that's a round, that's a round number that you could.
You don't anticipate gaming getting close to your food and beverage.
I can be completely, I can be completely transparent with you guys. You guys can go in and do simple math. Gaming does less than 10% of my revenue right now. I've been open three months.
So I figure.
Okay. I'm a legitimate restaurant and bar. I haven't been open a year. Okay. And when we came in here and we told you that we were going to be a, we were focused on food and alcohol, that's what we're focused on. Okay. And gaming, I know you like our wings, and gaming, gaming just provides a means to pay bills or fix the building that I invested in or, or something along those lines. So as, as a, I'm just going to, I'm just going to leave it at that. I'll continue to talk forever, but I wanted to bring that square footage thing. I'm one of the only bars, I think, in the area where that would affect, that is a legitimate restaurant and bar and also has five gaming machines. I just don't want to see my valuation to go down when I choose to retire. I hope to make more money on the business than what I paid for it, just like anybody else would. So I'd like you to keep that in mind if you, if you do choose to go that route. All right. Did you try the wings? Did you go spicy garlic or no?
No, I just came in there for burgers and moved the pool table, five more high tops in there and opened. Cause then I could actually hit it in on Friday.
You're opening up a whole nother can of worms there. Yeah, I'll let you, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you a tour of the kitchen and then I'll, I'll show you why adding extra tables may not be the best, the best thing in the world, but.
I was happy to go in there and ask you in there because I know for basically the first month you lived there.
Yeah, I also just had a baby two and a half weeks ago, so I took a little bit of time off.
So I was happy to not see you there. I mean, not that.
I must, I must be doing something right, but you probably saw these other two there.
No, I did not. So you had good workers.
I was going to say hopefully the experience was the same as if I was there or I wasn't there.
Absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Mike Dixon. I'm a part of the gambling group Coach House and unfortunately I think everybody is aware of what has happened to the business about two weeks ago. And it's kind of a sad situation for us. I was kind of brought in, I've known John in the establishment since it was opened. I've known John for about 18 years. And, you know, we've talked about business, restaurants a lot. I'm also a restaurant owner. I'm a restaurant owner in Geneva. I've been in Geneva for 17 years and I know the business probably better than most. And I know that there was a talk of discussion on how well Geneva is and we've lost a couple of restaurants. Well, I'm very familiar with most of the owners in the area and they are struggling. Geneva, unfortunately, based on our leadership, has made a decision to not support gaming and will never support gaming. And that is very conflicted for us because you've got Batavia and St. Charles who are just bordering towns, who are receiving this revenue, being able to support their businesses and Geneva cannot do that. So one of the things that I was kind of brought into is not only on the operations side of it, but also on the retooling side of it. And I believe, and it probably will happen if Batavia restricts their gaming licenses, I probably won't be a part of the organization. And I think you'll probably lose a restaurant that's been a part of the community for a long time and just will never come back. It is, we've had struggles, I mean struggles outside of COVID and then leading into all of the other challenges that has happened to us. We're talking about supply chain issues. We're talking about inflation. We're talking about all these factors. Now we have these mandates by the state of Illinois, which are even making it difficult for us on to be able to support our retention of our current staff, that without gaming, you are going to really restrict the new businesses coming into Batavia. It's guaranteed. It will not happen because it is so difficult for us to be able to support the businesses right now that you're not even seeing new restaurants opening. I mean, people think they have and you might reference some of the ones in Geneva that opened up within the past six months. They've been worked on for two years. This is a huge process to get yourself into an opening or a restaurant that is up and running. And I'm just fearful that Batavia will really change the dynamic of, at least on a small scale, a small scale, you're going to have people, some restaurants that will come and go and so on and so forth. But I'm talking about that real investment, that real tooling, the things that are needed for a business to be able to support itself, they, they just won't be, they won't be there. And I won't be a part of Batavia, which would be sad because I know the community very well. I support a lot of the restaurants. I've had the wings, they're fantastic. I know, you know, a lot of the business owners in this area also that I hope you guys, I think there are things that you're concerned about that are not, people have this henny penny thought that, oh my goodness, Geneva had one of them was A-frame signs, the usage of A-frame signs. And they thought everybody would put an A-frame sign out and it never happened. It didn't. I think you want to beautify and maintain the beautification of Batavia. So I agree with some of the things on the signage part of it and so, so forth. But your license limitations, I don't understand. The parlors, I do understand because it doesn't fit Batavia. And there's an easy way for people to do that. You can actually do that research on your own without getting anything from the businesses. Look at your ST1, your, your sales tax filings and look at the gaming, the public knowledge gaming receipts. And that's how you identify these people. You won't be confused if it is a bar restaurant and, or a gaming parlor. You just won't. I think, oh, it was, there, cause there's like four or five things, signage, square footage. Square footage is a concern. Smaller locations, I don't know where, I, I understand that you think if I have multiple units or I maximize units of five, that maybe that place could be a gaming parlor place. But I don't think square footage, the definition of square footage is actually going to be an issue. And what were the other ones? This was last minute for me, guys. I apologize.
Limiting the number of licenses.
License, yeah. I think that's, there was just three.
Just.
And those are the three. So, all right, I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak?
I think we could jump into it.
What?
I think we could jump into it. I don't perceive major changes.
Let's take ordinance 2413, which is amending the city code to define gaming parlors and restrict advertising. I haven't heard anybody say that they don't want to restrict advertising, so I think that's a good one there. As far as the defining of gaming parlors, do we want to have that in there? Do we want to rely on what we know of receipts, both sales tax and, and gaming revenue to utilize that? And if we find that that gets out of hand, then we revisit it and add it as a condition?
We've done a nice job of protecting us to this point.
Yeah, I, I think it's worked fine. So to me, in my mind, I'd say restricting advertising is one that goes through and we just remove the definition of gaming parlors to put in there because unless I know or I see from physical evidence, either from tax receipts and, and gaming numbers and what I see physically in, in or out of a business, I don't want to be having to go through somebody's books every year. I think that's something we need to do to make this work.
And just to be clear, we wouldn't audit everybody's books every year. It would only be on suspicion that it looks like a gaming parlor and they're, they're trying to pretend to be a restaurant or bar.
And in the years we've had it, I don't think we've had anything even close to morphing into that.
I think we're well protected with the one-year requirement to hold a liquor license.
It happens again that we get another one that hasn't been in business for a year.
We don't even have any data to say what those numbers could be. So I'm not making that assumption upfront on, on the business you're talking about.
Like it's the wrong assumption on that business, but then also in terms of the advertising, I just feel it's a little bit broad. I mean, like you go up to Wilson Street and they just have their, their A-frame sign, it's advertising their specials and it says video gaming on it. I mean, I don't really think that's that obtrusive, you know? I mean.
They have more than that.
Yeah, they have a little neon sign up top.
And stickers on the windows.
What? I can't hear you.
And stickers on the windows.
I, I just don't, I think that the advertising portion of this is too broad. I mean, I'm looking, I'm looking around and I don't really see a ton of advertising in the downtowns. We've already talked about that as well before. That made my position on that, so I'm going to be voting no in its entirety. I think it's too broad.
Y'all still have any comment before I make a motion?
So I'm going to make a motion on sending this to council, 2413, amending the city code to restrict advertising is the only thing I'm going to remove the, defining gaming parlors from it. Amend it to be just, just about the restricting of advertising. That's my motion.
Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Saron. We'll do a roll call on this one, please.
Marazza.
Hi.
Nancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Sulfah.
No.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
No.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay. Euer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Yep.
Thank you. And then we will move on to ordinance 2414, restricting the number of video gaming terminals on a square footage basis. I guess I could make that motion in the positive that we recommend that one to council and then we can vote on it. So we get the answer out and not just hold it.
Exactly.
I think that's what I'll do. We'll make it in a positive motion that we recommend a council restriction of the number of video gaming terminals on a square footage basis. Second. By Wolf, second by Ayazi. Roll call, please.
Marazza.
No.
Nancy.
No.
Beck.
No.
Peeper.
No.
Chanzet.
No.
Sulfah.
No.
Wolf.
No.
Baron.
No.
Lehman.
No.
Ayazi.
No.
Malay. Euer.
No.
Saron.
Nope.
Vocal singer.
No.
13.
All right, thank you. And then next would be ordinance 202415, capping the number of establishments with video gaming at 15. And we'll also make that in the positive motion. We recommend that to council. Yes.
Ask a question about the concern about grandfathering in for legacy sake and for selling the business. Where are we going to discuss that at a later point?
Yeah, usually after we approve a motion, then we have a discussion. So would you like to second my motion?
No.
It doesn't have to be.
You don't have to vote for it. It just gets, it just calls the vote.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Wolf, second by Lehman. Roll call, please.
We know we have to discuss it.
Let's have a discussion.
No.
I'm trying to get this, I'm trying to get this done. I just want another step. Go ahead.
Process is hard. I have the same question that Alderman Lehman had about, I'd like to see the number revised. I would also like to see a provision perhaps that we allow one sale of the business with the licenses that are existing currently so that the folks that came into town with this expectation, they have the opportunity to sell it and then after that or continue.
If that buyer can't sell it, it's the same result.
But they at least buy it knowing that. They don't buy, they bought it not knowing.
But the value, they're going to offer a lot less, so the value still goes down because of that.
But they get to operate with it for all that time.
Worth less because they bought it and they get the benefit, but nobody else knows. That's the problem I see with that. So we either have it as a legacy to me or you don't.
Okay. I, I would, I would put in the legacy then and have 11 licenses. And then if one liked the liquor licenses, if like the liquor licenses, if one decides to get rid of their gaming, then we have one available.
Don't change it. We don't have to do anything. We just leave it as it is.
Right now? No, we have to put a cap on it. We don't have a.
We don't have to put a cap on it. We are voting whether or not we put a cap on it.
Right, but the cap is 15. So I was just also saying with the numbers.
Right. That's the proposal. That's, that's a proposal. If we do nothing, we don't have to worry about any legacies or any sales or anything in the future.
And this is just for another council.
That's for another council. It's a five, 10, 20 years.
We should almost take the vote because if it doesn't go through, we could avoid this discussion.
So as, as, as proposed, it would be capping the gaming.
I don't support it capping it at 15. I support capping it all.
Okay, I understand that. So then vote against it.
But then are we going to continue talking?
And then if you would like, if you would like, if you would like to make an amended motion after we vote on this, then you can do that. And then we can vote on that. Okay? So we're going to do this one first. And this is capping the numbers of establishments of video gaming at 15. And we have a motion by myself and then a second by Lehman. Any other discussion? We could get a roll call, please.
Marazza.
No.
Nancy.
No.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Sulfah.
No.
Wolf.
No.
Baron.
No.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
No.
Malay. Euer.
Aye.
Saron.
No.
Vocal singer.
Did you answer?
Yes. I did not answer yet. I did not answer yet. No. I'm having a tough time deciding. I'm processing information as effectively as I did earlier in the evening. No. Eight to five.
Eight?
Five to eight.
So five yes, eight no's. Okay. So that motion fails at 15, capping at 15. And remember, this is the committee level vote. This just moves it on to council with a positive or negative recommendation. Usually if they fail here, we're not going to take it to the council to, to vote on.
Also, my question is more along the lines of like, does the vote change among us if we're, in support of a cap or not a cap? Are the votes the same? No cap, no yours. You're good.
15 if you got a no on it. I doubt if you try to cap it lower, it's not going to work.
No, and like, so the cap, like the cap is just dead.
Good point.
At any point, yes.
Unless you, unless you can, you know, get another few votes to be able to pass it at council, then you could add in the, you know, the grandfather clause or legacy, however you want to describe it. And again, this could be something that could be brought back up at any time by any future council.
No.
So they can have this kind of discussion for an hour or two or three before we make a decision on it.
I would like to say we can't discuss this for at least six months.
Second. How good was that?
Not going to find any arguments here.
You got two aldermen directing staff not to put this on an agenda for six months.
Done.
So those will go on to the council agenda for next Monday night and then we'll vote on this. Okay?
Like, said a year, but.
Six months is enough.
Jen.
Okay. And we will move on to item number 11, which is ordinance 2024-24, an ordinance amending, an ordinance adopted by the city council of Batavia, Kane and DuPage counties, Illinois, authorizing and providing for the issue of waterworks revenue bonds, IEPA of said city. Seems like we do this every month.
We have a lot going on with the water department.
To jump through every last little hoop. Now, I'm not complaining because we're going to be able to get better deal on more money. I think that's good.
Yes. Right. So what this ordinance does is, excuse me, I have a cold, is amend the ordinance that you passed this past October for lead service line replacements for $2,100,000 IEPA loan. However, the IEPA has indicated to our consultants and to Jeremy Barki, our water superintendent, that they have additional bypass funding that will be available and that we would be able to borrow it at 0% interest for 30 years, which is a fantastic deal. And so we are recommending that we borrow the full amount that they would allow because this will not complete our lead service line replacements, but it will go a long way faster than doing $2,100,000 in lead service line replacements. And the differential in annual payments is not that much.
And the fact that we can get that work done sooner means that that work will cost less on top of it. So not only is it a better rate on it, but it can get done sooner and more of it can get done. So I don't know that there's any questions on this one unless anybody has any.
If we find that we can cover our costs with a amount lesser than the loan total, could that extra amount then just be used to pay off the extra capital on that? Or would it be used for something else potentially?
It's a reimbursement loan. So we have to do the construction and then they pay us back.
Thank you.
So it can only be for what it costs you.
And we don't expect that to do all of the services, right?
No, we do not. There, there's still.
They won't do all of them anyway. So as far as we could stretch it, I'm sure they'll stretch it. And, you know, they've done a phenomenal job to this point. And I think it's just, this is another good thing that's happening there. So I'm very happy about that. Okay. I'm going to let somebody else make a motion on this to recommend to council ordinance 202424. I'm moved. Motion by Euer, second by Vocal Singer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That one passes and that, can that go on consent agenda, would think?
I think so. I think so. Yeah. Well, no, probably not.
Yeah, we should probably talk about it because we're going to, it's a very public thing trying to get rid of the lead services too.
Yeah, because the bond council always asks me to send them a copy of our agenda and they like to read the wording on it and.
Yeah, and we don't want to, we don't want to delay anything more though, all the stuff we have to do for them to get approved. Okay, let's move on to item 12, which is a discussion of funding the Carriage Crest stormwater improvements. You're up again, Peggy.
Right. So when we had our Cal meeting where we had the council retreat, I had mentioned that I was evaluating the cash position for the stormwater fund and how we would pay for the Carriage Crest project. We had planned to issue debt because we thought the cost was going to be higher than what it was. And we have higher than we thought ARPA fund, funding remaining. So the differential, I sent out a memo, is $1,350,000. We had a surplus in 2023 of over $3 million in our general fund. So my recommendation would be to utilize some of those reserves rather than to pay interest and borrow and the cost associated with issuing bonds. You have to have a, a bond rating and several other things that, that costs quite a bit of money and for a low amount, it just doesn't make sense to borrow for a low amount.
Questions? Comments about this? I think this is, again, one of the infrastructure things that we've been talking about the whole time I've been on the council. And it's, you know, something that we've taken a really good, I think, hard stance to try to get these things resolved in the different spots in town where we've worked really hard for things that have been neglected. I'll stop there. I won't go any further into what I think about some of it. But we need to get these things done and this is probably the best and most cost effective way to do it. And we're right in the middle of this or beginning of this project. I just saw the email about trees starting to come out. So get ready for questions, comments. Jen?
I have to agree. I think this is a good use of our reserves that many councils over many, many years have done a great job at contributing to that. You know, at some point we do have to spend that money. And I think that, you know, as opposed to borrowing and having to pay the interest, you know, we, we're paying for it. This is, the reserves is something for this type of project.
Definitely. I didn't want to just make the assumption that you would say, yes, go ahead. So I didn't prepare the budget amendment. But if you would all be in favor of it, then I'll just bring a budget amendment to consent Cal agenda at a future meeting.
So a future Cal, so we can see it and understand exactly dollars and everything before that goes into a contract to go out or budget line.
Well, it will just be a, a budget amendment to transfer the $1,350 to the stormwater fund. The other funds are already in the stormwater fund.
That's an easy one. Got your direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now onto a little bit deeper discussion of water and sewer division succession planning. Good evening, Gary.
Good evening. This is actually a similar conversation to what I had with city council almost seven years ago now related to the electric division. But tonight I'm here to talk about the water and sewer division. We have nine water operators. Four of them are eligible to retire immediately. We have really good information to indicate that at least two or three of them will be retiring within the next two years and then the others will retire within the next five years. About 18 months is what it takes for a new person off the street to become minimally certified and licensed water operator. And about three years before that person then is fully licensed and able to operate our treatment plant without supervision. We have considered and will consider hiring a fully licensed operator. But like what occurred back in 2016 with the electric industry, finding fully licensed water operators right now is a little bit like a unicorn. They're just not out there. The ones that are out there are all gainfully employed. So we highly anticipate that whoever we hire is not going to have experience. I seriously doubt that we're going to certainly find two or three fully seasoned operators, which is why we're here tonight to request authorization from council to increase staffing levels on a temporary basis, likely over the next couple of years. And then as retirements occur, staffing levels would return back down to nine operators. We basically followed the same game plan back in 2016 with the electric division. And it worked out very well as our senior lineman retired or resigned. We already had apprentices in place and the division really functioned without hiccup. And that's what we're hoping to do with the water and sewer division. As Peggy just mentioned, the water and sewer division is quite busy. We have a number of capital projects. And so having personnel in place to make things go smooth for the next couple of years is critical. So.
Everybody understands this and we've watched how, or at least I've watched how it's worked over the time, you know, been here and done this in other departments and how it's worked. I think the, the similar things that we've done in, in fire and police have also worked really well. So I think this is something, if we stay ahead of it and we plan for it, it's much, much easier to do this and be ready for it now, especially in the enterprise funds where we can, you know, have a little bit easier way to get the money to be able to support that staff.
Again, I'll stress the intention is to go back to our current staffing levels just through attrition and through retirement over the next two years here. Probably quicker than that.
I'm just trying to think here. Is there a possibility that somebody on the PP side, the personal, what is it, the, the other side that, like Streets?
One of our other divisions?
Yeah, one of your other divisions where there might be somebody that may be willing, because I know that in other municipalities, that's kind of how they've gotten some of their people. They've switched over from other divisions, you know, for that. And then also, this is a really good opportunity for somebody that is brand new, that's looking for a municipal position to grow with that, to really start out. This is your, this is your entry level person that you can build and, and grow. And that's really kind of what you guys are looking for.
Correct. We're going to, in this instance, we're actually going to advertise both internally and externally, again, trying to seek that, that water operator that's sitting out there. Maybe there's a water operator in Colorado who wants to move back to Illinois to be with their family. You never know. So, so we are going to advertise both internally and externally. But to answer your question, historically, we've, we've had people from other divisions apply and transfer over into the water division. That's happened a lot. So if we're not able to find a seasoned operator, we will then in all likelihood be hiring from inside in order to do that.
If you're, if you're transferring from one division to the other, aren't you kind of stealing, stealing from Peter to PayPal and?
Well.
You need other people then?
The other divisions, Streets and PPS specifically, it's easier to find personnel than it is, they're not licensed personnel, whereas in this case, they're actually licensed personnel. So.
Wants to change from, you know, manual labor all the time and go into, you know, more of a management controlled job.
Do they still have the opportunity to plow?
Our water division certainly helps out with plowing. Yes. Yeah. In fact, that's, when we have, when we have major storms, it's our former Streets division people who are now in the other divisions, who are the ones filling in on the, on the rotations on the plows. So very much, the next item is resolution 2024-045. And that is an approval of a revised intergovernmental agreement with the Department of Energy, Fermi site office for the supply of public water service. This was originally approved by the city almost a year ago. And then Fermi Lab notified us that there were legal concerns on their end. And basically they came with a request for us to review revised language. The city wasn't on board with their revised language. So it has taken now several months for the city and Fermi Lab to finally come to terms with language that our attorney and their attorney both agreed to. And basically that's what's before you tonight. So we are recommending approval of 24-045, which is the intergovernmental agreement. And we will be supplying Fermi with water service through this agreement.
Are we having a vote here for this? I just wanted to say as an employee of the Fermi Lab Research Alliance, I'd like to recuse myself from this, is why I ask.
And we might want to ask during the, I don't, I don't think you have to leave the dais to, to just not vote on it or not discuss it as an employee. Do you have a question? Somebody else have a question over here? I'll look for a motion then to approve resolution 202445R, approval of a revised intergovernmental agreement with the city of Batavia and the Department of Energy, Fermi site office for supply of public water service. I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Saron, second by Euer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and we have one extension. 15 is resolution 202437R, directing Batavia's NIPA representative to oppose carbon capture efforts at Prairie State Generating Company. Gary?
My last item for the night, resolution 2024-037, I would direct me as Batavia's NIPA representative to oppose carbon capture, as Alderman Wolf just said. Sorry for repeating that. If you read through my memo, you'll note that I really don't talk much about carbon capture in here. This is more of a, of a comment on the history that, that we've had. Back in 2023, my predecessor and a group of aldermen were very, very confident that plant ownership was the top priority. And unfortunately, they discounted a number of other potential options. And they basically focused on their criteria, plant ownership, plant ownership, plant ownership, and they put the blinders on. I've seen the 2003 study. I've read it. Unfortunately, that study all but dismissed other potential options and we ended up investing in Prairie State to the extent that we did. Jump ahead to 2010 and really then in 2011, by then the city realized that there might be troubles with its investment in Prairie State. And for five years between 2011 and 2012. And for five years between 2011 and 2016, we spent almost $2 million exploring different options to try and divest ourselves of our, of our assets in Prairie State and gain additional diversification. And it was really through that time that City Council pledged to always vet, and this is what I've been doing up to this date, always vet every single concept, every single option, never leave a stone unturned, and up to this date, most of those stones have, have, you know, not, not overturned anything. But at least we keep trying and we keep looking for different options. We've had legislature, legislature, one time we had legislature on Madigan's desk, which he had blessed, which basically was good as gold in Springfield, but that didn't go forward due to other concerns, having nothing to do with Springfield. We've had legal options that we tried to pursue, which, which ended up going nowhere. We've tried everything and, and over the years, and various different options. My point, though, is that we didn't just focus on one thing, you know, like our predecessors did, plant ownership, plant ownership, plant ownership. We've, we've always kept our focus on any option that comes up until really this past summer. That was the first time since going back to 2010 that City Council made a decision to, to dismiss an option out of hand without full consideration. So I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm not recommending this resolution because, because I just feel that the city should not dismiss any options, but I understand where council is coming from and certainly will, you know, abide by council's direction. I fully expect, you know, the resolution to, to direct me to do so, and that's what I will do so. But again, I just, as we, I talked about it last December, as the city explores options going into the next decade, just don't get yourselves into this, we only want this, we only want this, we only want this, because 20 years ago, that's what your predecessors did, and this is where we are today. So we just got to be careful about that. So that's all I have to say.
I have a question, though. In the pursuit of diversification in 2011, when we discovered that we would not be able to diversify and, and are stuck in this plant ownership, plant ownership, the only way that we will ever give Batavia diversification is if Prairie State closes, correct?
Right now, that's the only option.
That's the only option. So my biggest fear with...
Well, yeah, that was the theory.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Ms. Colby, that was the original theory, was that the plant, I mean, the original study said that we were going to grow to a 300-megawatt utility. I don't know where that load was coming from, there was no geography in this, in this city where that load was going to come from. But that was the study, and that was the theory, is that we're buying 55, and we're going to grow to 300, and so 55 is an appropriate value for a 300-megawatt load. Yes, you are right, though, Alderman Beck, that. And this day and age, our only contract is Prairie State, and we won't be able to diversify without that changing.
Or being able to sell some of the power that we're contracted to take. If we could sell it and make money on it, we could sell it and make money on it and then go out elsewhere and buy power from a diversified source. That's really the only options.
And, yes, exactly. Still not an option. So my, my, my support for this resolution comes from the fact that I don't see any reason to devote or invest a lot of money in a technology that's unproven, that's going to just go into a plant that is scheduled to be closed per state legislation in whatever the number of years is, a couple decades. And I also don't want to see carbon capture and storage used, the investment, if the investment goes through, used as the leverage point for the Prairie State lobbyists to say, we've just invested all of this money into this technology, and it's not quite working yet because it's never quite worked yet, but, but keep us open because, you know, we just invested, so please give us an exception. And then we're stuck even longer with this plant because we don't get to diversify, we will stay like this until this plant is closed. So that is why I support this resolution.
I strongly agree with everything Alderman Beck said. If we agree to do further research, we will just extend the time that we are stuck with Prairie State forever and cannot diversify any of our energy sources. As everything gets more efficient with LED bulbs and whatever, the future holds its term in terms of energy usage, we're probably not going to grow our load, unfortunately, to the 300-megawatt goal that we originally had, apparently.
That'll never happen.
Yeah, so we're just stuck if we go down this road.
So if we oppose it, but then Prairie State still does it, then what? We just don't, we wouldn't participate in the revenue generation from that?
No, you're, you're, you're directing me as NIPA's representative to vote no. I'm only one of three votes on the NIPA board, and NIPA is only one of nine votes. In fact, a majority, a minority vote on the, on the Prairie State board.
So it's just a vote. So that's my point, though. Do, are we, so no matter what the vote of all nine ends up being, then that ends up being what we're stuck with, no matter what?
That's correct.
We can't, we can't opt out of certain operations.
You're a minority of a minority.
But we can't opt out of certain operations of the plant, which we're all in, no matter what.
It would be like you three get to vote on it, and the rest of us get to vote on it, and you say no, but we all say yes.
Sure. No, I just, I just wanted to make sure.
But if this section of us, and you three decide to do that, it does make a difference. So it does make a difference what we vote on this and what we direct Gary to say to them, and his vote, and how much weight that carries when that's at that board meeting to decide on which way they go. So it does make a difference.
I just kind of want to follow up on Gary's concern, though, as well, that, you know, I mean, I keep on hearing, you know, we're stuck with Prairie State, but I think we're stuck with Prairie State anyway, regardless of what happens here. So I, I do share some of the same concerns that Gary just said, I don't, I wasn't here when this all started, so.
I'm the only one.
Yeah, so I don't, but I, I am fearful of going down the same path, and the fact of the matter is, we're stuck with Prairie State until they close regardless, right?
And as Abby said, the technology isn't proven, they're, you know, trying to spin, depending on whose articles you read, depending on what you watch about it, whether or not they're going to get it figured out in five years, 10 years, 15 years, whatever it is. I feel like I'm back in 2003 when I got on the council and we started this, and that's what we were told. They can figure out how to get rid of all the sulfur docks, and they can figure out how to do this, they can get these scrubbers to work to meet whatever regulation they come up with. Well, then, in the middle of building it, they changed regulations, the money went up exponentially to be able to do that, and you're already tied into it. And that's my second fear, is I made the mistake once of believing all the experts we listened to and all the meetings we went through, and they said they could make it happen, and it was only going to cost this much. Well, I feel like that's the same type of things I'm listening to again as we're talking about carbon capture. And I've made the mistake once, I'm not going to make it again, and I don't think we should go down that road unless there's a proven way upfront they're going to tell us they can do that. And that's why I'm okay with voting for this, because I don't think we need to go down that rabbit hole and spend whatever money it takes to do that. And if we're one vote, or nine votes, or however we end up being, what that says to that group as a part of it, I think has some weight, and I think it's something that, in my mind, we need to say no to.
Just as a follow up to that, in terms of the money wise, I mean, knowing that it's already been discussed how we're the minority of the minority, so assuming that this, assuming our opposition fails and it does get approved, is it going to cost us money?
No, I mean, whether you vote yes or you vote no, I, I don't know that it's in your power to change that. I don't know if I fully understand your question.
I mean, my question would be, I mean, I just heard, you know, Alderman Wolf just to say, you know, I, we were told this, we were told that, and then the numbers went up, and it ended up basically costing us money. I mean.
If we vote no, and the carbon capture still goes forward, it's going to end up costing money. But, but again, I think it's been publicly stated, Prairie State's not looking to invest, Prairie State is looking to have a developer invest. Prairie State's not investing $2 billion, only would be done through a developer and through recap, through recapture of the 45Q tax credits. Prairie State owners are not looking to make this investment, only through a developer.
But it wouldn't cost us money.
I won't say that either.
Because if we take advantage of the carbon capture, I guarantee you, ratepayers will pay off the company's investment that builds the carbon capture.
I think what Gary is saying is this, the, that Prairie State expects a third party to be developing this technology. So the, so the members of Prairie State are not going to be paying the, the research and development and.
They'll pay the end cost if they get to take advantage of it or get.
Yeah, like what the charge is for putting your carbon into the system? I don't know.
See, and that's, to me, the biggest gray area of all, and like I said, I've been through it once, I don't want to go through it again.
So in theory. My main concern is, is the rates for the Batavia citizens, are going to affect what we pay ultimately down the road? Is it going to make it go up or go down? I mean, we don't know the answer to that, huh?
Two things I can say for certainty, the river's not going to get wider going through Batavia, and rates are never going to go back down.
So, I mean, to that point, that very narrow point, I did have a slide in the NIPA presentation on January 31st, and I have it in front of me tonight, but we had a bar graph there that showed this much was bonds, this much was actual energy costs. And when those bonds disappear, you're basically cutting, cutting that bar in half, for lack of a better word. So that, that lower energy cost isn't going to suddenly double to go back up where it is today. So in theory, if the plant continues to operate as it does today, once the bonds are paid off, yes, costs are going to go down considerably, because, because you're no longer paying mortgage, you're living in the house without having to pay mortgage.
I, I think the plant will be closed by the time the bonds and the energy costs get to that point.
But, I mean, that was to your question, though, that's why.
Yeah, I get it.
Abby?
And one of you had mentioned the tax credits that they're trying to reap. So the tax credits are being paid by us, the taxpayers, so it's also kind of going back to a previous conversation about how we are a very small piece of, we're one of nine, but we're even, you know, one municipality out of thousands and thousands, but sending that up, the food chain, to our federal legislators to say, stop tax, stop incentivizing this, this technology that is not proven, and it's just kicking the climate change can down the road further and further. It's being pushed mostly by people that benefit from burning of fossil fuels. Let's shift that focus to other sources of energy so that we can just finally move on from this.
Any in the audience that would like to comment?
I feel like we need a shorter podium.
Susan Russo, I know, I know all of you pretty much know what my thoughts are along these lines, but I just wanted to share a few kind of broader perspective on, you know, this carbon capture issue. You know, few of us are engineers or scientists, and our language does not normally include words like carbon capture and sequestration. We may be tempted to feel overwhelmed and incapable of making an informed decision. However, we all do have common sense. As we go about our daily lives, we regularly observe weather events that are extreme in both their occurrence and their intensity. Just a few weeks ago, the western suburbs experienced multiple simultaneous tornadoes. As a gardener, I am already seeing a shift in which plants thrive and what new diseases are affecting plants and trees. I now check for ticks because of our changing insect biodiversity, and our daily news includes reports of melting glaciers, dying coral reefs, and rising sea levels. The answer to tonight's question relies on our common sense and experience. If we say yes to carbon capture at Prairie State, we are saying yes to a technology that has never effectively worked at a power plant. We are saying yes to a process that consumes huge amounts of water and power. We are saying yes to continued toxic waste dis contributions to the 720-acre coal ash landfill at the Prairie State plant. We are saying yes to continuing the nation's seventh-largest coal polluter. The only purpose of carbon capture at Prairie State is to extend the life of the coal-burning power plant, even though the Illinois Climate and Equitable Jobs Act requires Illinois to be carbon-free by 2045. Saying yes to carbon capture at Prairie State also diverts money from and delays our transition to clean energy economy that is essential to our state, the nation, and the world. At the NIPA 101 meeting, we learned that citizens have a direct voice on the NIPA board through you, our representatives. Common sense tells us that you must reaffirm your decision from last spring, and you must vote no to carbon capture at Prairie State. Thank you.
All right, then, with that being said, I will make a motion that we recommend to council Resolution 2024-37R, Directing NIPA's Representative to Oppose Carbon Capture Efforts at Prairie State Generating Company.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Vogelsinger. Roll call, please.
Barada.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Chanzit.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
13.
Thank you, that'll go on to our next council meeting.
Thank you, that's how, you know, I've got council's direction, so.
Thank you, Gary. Item number 16 then would be Ordinance 2024-25, Authorizing Execution of Option to Purchase Real Property, commonly known as 916 First Street, Batavia, Illinois.
Yes, so it might be surprising for some to hear that I am presenting this ordinance authorizing execution of an option agreement to purchase 916 First Street for the food pantry, when it wasn't so long ago that we passed another ordinance authorizing execution of an option agreement for 3038 Webster Street. This property at 916 First Street has a lot of advantages over the Webster Street property and was not on the market at the time that we made the option agreements for Webster Street. Webster Street, it's about 1.3 acres, it has a 14,000-square-foot building on it that's, there's a demising wall in the middle, it's got a barrel roof that has a lot of issues with it, and for a laundry list of other reasons, that building, it would be unsuitable to convert it into a food pantry. So at that site, we were looking at having to construct a wholly new building and either repurpose or demolish the existing structure there. It, you know, the rough cost estimates, we have the $3 million grant to use for relocating the food pantry. I think we would have gone through all of that and more between the purchase of that property, construction, demolition, and all of that. This property is on the market for $2 million, but it is a very pristine facility, 14,000 square feet currently being used for warehouses and office space. We, so the recommendation is to shift our focus over to this property. The seller here, because it is such a prime piece of real estate, is unwilling to take it off the market for the six months that we were able to get from the Webster Street property. In this case, the option agreement is only for a 60-day period of time, but we anticipate there to be fewer issues with regard to our due diligence on this newer building that we would be looking at. Also, the option agreement would be for $20,000. That would, we would not be able to recoup that in the event that we decided not to purchase the building, that would go to the seller. However, if we do decide to purchase the building, the $20,000 would be applied to the $2 million price for the building. So we are recommending that we pursue this option agreement, and as we work through the due diligence period on the Webster Street property, I would bring back a discussion about whether we want to pursue purchase of that property in the future. I bring that up because it has been identified. I bring that up because it has been identified as a, one of the primary spaces for redevelopment as part of the new, the draft downtown plan that we have. So we can have further discussions in that regard. Does anybody have any questions?
I've been over and looked at the property just because I wanted to refresh what I knew of where it was and what it was. I think the layout is really good for the intended use. I think the dock, the, the parking space, everything kind of just fits right into what we've talked about over the past probably two years of relocating this, when we knew we were going to be having to do that. And I think fiscally, it's a lot better deal and, you know, provides all the things I think we've looked for. And we're actually abutting one of our own properties right there on First Street where there's a lift station. So, you know, way it makes it easier to maintain because we can share that in one spot.
And I assume the food pantry is excited about it?
They're really happy about it.
Basically move in ready.
Exactly.
It's got office space for administrative tasks.
I'm sure there would be some things that there would, would want to be modified. But again, with the grant money that we have, that's a possibility and not having to look further than that, that amount of the grant money, I think is a real plus for, you know, trying to, to develop this and make it a usable thing that we see into the future. We know how important it is here. We know how ingrained it is in the city. And I think it's really important that we get it done and, you know, we keep it going.
Use the grant money when we have it.
Right, exactly.
Use it.
One of the comments I hear in Chicago is regarding grant money. If you got it, you better spend it. And don't let it lay in the, think you're going to let it lay in the bank for three or four years because there's a supposition out there that there's a lot of people who've got grant money and they haven't spent it. And the federal boys may be coming back here looking for that, get the rest of that money back. They're just not going to let you take this money and then just sit on it for five or six years.
That's what's funding Prairie Street is one of those rounds where they took back and then relocated. And that's where we got that. And that's why we had to start this year, you know, to get that going and be able to keep that match money for that.
They want the money on the street being used. They don't want somebody holding on to it for three or four years playing a game with it. So I think Laura is right on in finding this deal and getting this done because we really, number one, the food pantry and the coal skies that need the space and need the building. And secondly, this is move in, move in a ball real quick.
So we have a motion by Sarone and a second by Vogelsinger? Is that what I just heard? Let's just do this, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. And, I don't know, you want to leave that on the regular agenda or do you want me to mention it during?
Might be nice to mention.
We'll put it, we can put it on consent and I'll mention it during, because I think that's important.
Yeah, it sure is.
That gets out and.
There's a lot of people who are following this story.
Yeah, too, too much going, else going on in town. We may need to talk about it again. Okay, then we'll move on to item 17, which is project status.
Okay, so what we have been dealing with this week is, over the weekend, we had reports from residents that there was foaming on Mahoney Creek. And we were contacted by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency on Monday because one of our residents contacted them and let them know that the foam was there on Friday night and reappeared also on Sunday evening as well. We also had an incident at a corporation, Flint Group, that's located at 1333 Kirk Road, where an exterior fire suppression system was triggered. But when we arrived, there was no fire on the scene. So mystery as to why that system was triggered, but the foam went into their parking lot and into our storm drains. On Monday, when the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency called, they made the connection between those two different events. And they asked us for both our incident report for that as well as the, the SDS for the fire suppressant. And a city has on hand for each corporation that is located in our town, a book that contains the safety data sheets for all of the chemicals that are used at the various companies. And so the IEPA asked for that and we were able to provide that to them. At the same time, it was discovered that this foam may contain PFOA, PFOAs. And that's also, that, that is a, you know, chemical that the federal government and the state government are starting to look at putting in place regulations. We had previously talked to you about making communications with our residents about, we had tested for PFAS in our water, drinking water and found it to be below the levels indicated that the regulations were going to come out at. But these types of chemicals are now being, beginning to be regulated. So the IEPA visited the company and Mahoney Creek and they have taken samples. So we're awaiting the report back from the IEPA about what they find. The city has also taken samples of its own and we have submitted those for testing. And then to advocate on behalf of the city and the citizens of Batavia, the city has hired GZA, environmental consultants, who will also perform testing. But in addition to that, they will ensure that the foam is cleaned up properly and by the parties who are responsible. So I'm sure that members of the public have many, many questions about this. And we're trying to put out all of the information as we come to know it. But we, today we used our Code Red system for the first time to push out a message to all of the residents that live adjacent to Mahoney Creek. And so they either received a voicemail message or a text message. And this was to more than just the people who had voluntarily signed up for that program. But we have the ability to push it out to any phone number that's on the national registry so long as people haven't signed up for the, they're not on the do not contact list. Also, we have set up two ways for the public to communicate with us about the situation. You can leave a voicemail question or comment at 630-454-2002. Or you can email us at M Creek, M C R E E K, at bataviail.gov. And if you have requested a response, you will receive one and updates will continue to be provided. And lastly, just as a precaution, it's recommended that the public continue to refrain from contact with Mahoney Creek until we get more information about the results from the, the testing. Does anybody have any questions? Yes.
A question, if somebody is on the do not call list, but signs up for the Code Red, they'll still get the message, correct?
That's correct. So everyone who voluntarily signed up gets the message.
Okay. Thank you.
But I got the message and that comes across as possible spam. So I don't know if there's anything we can do about that.
It should be a 630 number and it's the same.
I already saved it as a contact, but that doesn't help the residents.
This is really the first time we've used it to try to get some feedback, you know, so either of you aldermen that are in, in that area, you know, want to just reach out to neighbors, whatever, and ask if they got the messages without signing up or with signing up so we get an idea of how it in real life plays out. And then also, you can easily direct people to the city website to get the information on Mahoney Creek and then the links are there so they don't have to try to remember every last little letter to be able to get to type in to, you know, leave an email or to call or anything. It's, it's available there. So we try to judge how the system we're trying to put in place to notify people works so we get, I guess, some real world feedback on that. So we know what we need to look at, what we, what we're doing right and what we need to do better.
I'm just concerned so many people like to be on the do not call list. So it's getting that word out of, if you still want to get these notices, you have to opt in.
Yes, right now, when you go to our website, this signing up for the system is a pop up that you have to get rid of. So we're trying to do our best.
I have, I tried to sign up for Code Red and then I know we had some issues with it. I haven't gone back to reach the tryout, but I keep getting text messages from the old system and I got a Mahoney Creek alert from the 833 number that I still get agendas to.
For this one, because we are transitioning to Code Red, we put it out through every message channel we have. So it went out through Civic Plus Alerts. It went out, so our website alerts, it was posted on the website, posted on social media. It went out to our non-emergency group, which was, is one of the signup options on Code Red. That's almost 500 residents. And then it pulled in another 300 or so residents from that national call database that we noted. When you sign up for Code Red, you'll have the option to select your primary method. But we also send it out via email, phone, text. So it comes through in multiple different ways. The, the voicemail was from Laura today. The text had information directing people to website and the email had a little more information as well.
And I thought that one of the good ways to, to, you know, make sure that everybody is available or is available, the answers that we have for the questions that come in is to do like we did with the budget and have a list of the questions and the answers posted to that page or that link that talks about Mahoney Creek. Because that way, it's not what my neighborhood or what my friend heard or what I thought I heard when I got my answer back. It's actually what the city said to those people in response form available on the website. I think that's a good way to try to keep it the same thing that everybody knows or, you know, that information gets out one way, you know, in, in one form or one response.
And the website, is it the notify me then thing? Or is it different?
It's different.
And I've only gone on, on here, I haven't gone on a desktop yet to see if it's different because I know there's differences between.
The, the alert sent out was the same across all channels. Part of the reason why we've used Code Red is because we are probably going to be switching away from our existing website provider, which is how those notifications go out, like the one Abby received. And so ultimately, over time, more people will sign up from Code Red. That's something we'll evaluate with any new provider. But that's part of the reason why we've done this as well. So in this transition period, kind of like we said for the first six months or so, we're going to be doing it both until that kind of change is over. We're going to take stock in, I believe September is emergency preparedness month. So kind of depending on where we are there, we will do another big push. We included it in backpacks. We resolved any signup issues. So we're making sure that residents are signing up for the system and they can text the number on our website, learn more. Like we said, we've resolved those signup issues as well.
Any other questions on that or comments?
Just a other couple of things that I'd like to mention. This week, the police department, I'm sorry, last week, the police department toured eight different architect engineer vendors through the police department as part of the police department space needs analysis RFQ. Bids will be due on April 5th. And applications for the position of lateral police officer are now live. Interested in qualified candidates can find out more on our website or apply to serve, which is another website. But if anybody knows of police officers who are looking to maybe change to work for the city of Batavia, definitely recommend them to check out our site. This Monday, the mayor and chief Maza went and hosted a fraud detection and prevention seminar over at the Homestead that was extremely well attended. They said they had 60 to 70 people there and it was a very good discussion. The mayor presented notable points in Batavia history prior to the presentation that everybody really enjoyed. Public Works took delivery of three plug-in hybrid vehicles and two will be utilized for the electric division and one is going to be used by our IT department. And these vehicles represent the first electrification efforts for the city's fleet. And then tomorrow, several of us will be attending a, the Illinois Association for Flood Plane and Storm Water Management. They are going to be honoring the city of Batavia for its storm water management achievement over the past decade. So we're really proud of that. But that is thanks to projects like the storm water separation, the Mahoney Creek detention basin and things like that, that we have done as a city to commit and investments in helping people in the flooded areas of our city. So thank you very much for that. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me. Thank you.
On to 18 others. Does anybody have any others tonight to discuss? That, we will move then immediately to an executive session, item 19 for litigation. So I'll need the motion to go in executive session. That was by Uwer and seconded by Vogelsinger. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.